Stand by.
Skiing in Canada.
Welcome, everyone, to Marquette City Commission Meeting, Monday, April 8, 2013. At 7:00 PM, meeting called to order. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, city clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, your honor. Commissioner Ken Benzey.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne, Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Neme.
Here.
And Mayor DePietro.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Commissioner Coyne, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to excuse Commissioner Coyne.
There's second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme.
Can we have a reason, your honor? Can we get the reason for it? Commissioner Coyne's out of town on, out of the country. Yeah.
Okay. He's, uh, out of the country at this time. Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, second by Commissioner Neme. Anything further, Commissioner Stonehouse?
No.
Commissioner Neme?
No, your honor.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none at this time, I ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passed six to zero. Thank you. Commissioners, note of any agenda changes? Commissioner Neme.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to add, I guess as probably number 10, a discussion of the possibility of having Marquette senior high school students, uh, shadow us or sit side, settle with commissioners at the April 29th commission meeting.
Thank you. Um, is there any other commissioner with their agenda change?
I would support that.
Commissioner Neme? Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to move that we add a short discussion on Hartwood Forest.
Hartwood Forest, that'll be, uh, number 11.
Okay.
Commissioner Benzey, thank you. Is there any other, uh, changes to the agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would like to remove item D, uh, reference to pump out fees from the consent agenda.
Make that a discussion.
Okay. That'd be number 12. Any other commissioners? On agenda changes? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
No.
Commissioner Schneider. Uh, with that, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Close. Motion passed at six to zero. Announcements. I got a couple announcements here. Uh, election board, one vacancy as of 4/11/13. Housing commission, one vacancy. Uh, local commission, off, local officers compensation commission, three openings. Planning commission, one vacancy. Regional recreation authority, business plan ad hoc committee, one alternate opening. Sister city advisory committee, three openings. Sustainable community ad hoc committee, that's Parks and Rec advisory board rep, one vacancy. Traffic parking advisory committee, one vacancy. Thank you. With that, we'll open this up for, uh, or go to a public hearing of 01 through 06 dash SOA dash O2 dash 13. City clerk?
Yes, your honor, this is a public hearing to review proposed sign ordinance amendments. Background, the planning commission has been working on amendments to the city sign ordinance during the past several months as directed by the city commission. Six separate draft ordinance amendments were created. These amendments are intended to, one, establish a new, establish new methodologies for, methodologies, excuse me, for calculating, uh, total sign allowances for shopping centers. Two, provide for definitions that fill gaps in the existing ordinance and bring the sign ordinance up to date with new sign technologies and styles. And three, address other deficiencies in the ordinance that either require code enforcement attention are needed due to changes in the, in sign styles and technologies, or observed to be relatively simple issues to resolve. On March 5th, 2013, the planning commission held a public hearing regarding these sign ordinance amendments. Changes were made to three of the draft amendments in order to address concerns brought forward in public comments. The planning commission unanimously passed all motions recommending that the city commission adopt the six amendments. The city commission is being asked to hold a public hearing on these, these city sign ordinance amendments. A complete record of the planning commission meeting minutes regarding the amendments, including six work sessions, and a public hearing have been compiled and are attached. Fiscal effect none, recommendation, hold a public hearing to review and consider the sign ordinance amendments recommended by the planning commission, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, I'll open it for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time, please state your name, physical address. Whoever wished to come up, may come up at this time. Item number six. Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, this is for public hearing, not public comment.
Patricia Gruber. My address is eight. Okay, I turned it on. Thirty-one years ago, the long blue edge of summer, a vacation guide to the shorelines of Michigan was published. Regarding Marquette, it stated, "It sounds disparaging to say it right out, but as you enter Marquette, it probably will not strike you as any great beauty of a town. You either drive under a very utilitarian or conveyor, or swish past masses of roadside emporiums and their competing signs, which it is hard to tell, um, which ancient red sandstone structure is the center." And Marquette's come a long, long way since that time. Um, the city is beautiful. People want to come here. Uh, were known throughout the state and basically upper Midwest and beyond. The proposed ordinance, uh, would greatly increase the allowable signage and the size, number and size of those signs. Um, your job is to protect the interest of all residents, not just business owners and developers. Uh, the ordinance should not be amended to correct errors and judgments by individual property owners or developers. The language that is proposed would allow each tenant in a multiple tenant site to have multiple wall signs that would create visual clutter. Lots with secondary frontages would be allowed a 100% increase in their sign area. The proposal will allow signage for additional stories to be placed on those buildings which have more than one story, and it would have to be placed on the story where the business is located, which would, again, force the pedestrian to look ups, upward, um, and expand the clutter on the front of a building. Specific descriptions of the sign types are defined, which is good. However, those descriptions define the portion of a sign that would be used in calculating the sign area. This would decrease the sign of many existing signs, as well as those built under the new language. Embellishments to signs, such as decorative plot pylons, monument style, uh, pole cladding, uh, et cetera, uh, increase the physical sign of the sign, and they make it more noticeable to, um, the sign more noticeable. And if it is well done, it makes the sign more attractive. However, they still obscure other components of the streetscape, creating a cluttered appearance. The embellishments are more attractive than utilitarian, off-the-wall type of signs that, you know, say Coke and then the business name underneath it. So embellish, embellishments should be concerned. However, uh, the proposed 100% disregard of all these embellishments, uh, should not be allowed. You can give a reduction in it to encourage use of them, but 100% is, uh, inappropriate, in my opinion. Graphics are often recognized, uh, long before a lettered message can be read. If they aren't important to the aspect of the sign, why are they used? Because they get the attention of the viewer. Uh, therefore, they should be included in calculating the sign area, possibly at a reduced rate. Uh, in pedestrian-oriented areas, primarily the central business district and Third Street, guidelines should follow those for historic areas where signs are smaller in scale, pedestrian-oriented. They complement the building details. They have muted lighting, preferably backlit lighting with darker backgrounds and lighted letters, um, rather than large areas of illumination and dark letters. Uh, they should be harmonious with the building's architecture in terms of color, form, design, and scale, and the focus should be on simplicity and legibility. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time on the public hearing of sign ordinance? Anyone else wishing to address city commission at this time in regards to the sign ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Turn it over to my fellow commissioners. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Your honor, I'd like to move we suspend the rules momentarily to have a brief discussion prior to action.
Sure. We'll open for discussion.
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Neme. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
Um, you know, I, I think, okay, I'm sorry. We need to vote.
Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm sure we all want to do the right thing here, and, and, uh, you know, we've got a, kind of a mountain of material from the planning commission. They've spent a lot of time on this. Um, we certainly have to, uh, pay attention to the recommendations they have made. I think the thing we're all trying to avoid is, is creating a situation in our, in our historic downtown that would take away from that. And I guess I would ask if we could, uh, ask Dennis to, uh, offer any comments that he might have that would, uh, ameliorate that concern.
I'd be happy to offer a little background on it. You know, this started out last August, September timeframe, and the city commission had directed the planning commission to consider, uh, some amendments to the sign ordinance to help foster economic development, particularly dealing with shopping centers. So most of the work that the planning commission has done is specific to shopping centers. Now, they did amend a number of definitions that needed to be clarified because they're things that we run into on a day-to-day interpretation basis in the office and through the Board of Zoning Appeals. So all of those definitions that you see modified for one reason or another, um, were either, uh, requested consideration from staff or the community due to interpretation issues. There were two of those definitions that were amended based upon input from the beautification committee and the, um, downtown development authority. The second round of amendments, if you will, that you would be seeking tonight deal with portable signs, and we have had consistent, um, challenges with portable signs, particularly dealing with the vendors that operate out of Mattson Park, selling ice cream, those things that are actually city-sponsored. So a majority of those amendments deal particularly with the portable sign, um, issue. There was an amendment to what the planning commission already had discussed based upon input from the community and the beautification committee as well. The third sign ordinance amendment deals with the shielding of light sources and a lim, uh, uh, trying to make more night-friendly or night sky-friendly amendments to the sign ordinance. The section 8212, um, was where the planning commission had ran into some challenges, and this deals with, particularly dealing with the, um, electronic message centers. Right now, in the, in the sign ordinance, there are, uh, really no controls over where electronic message centers are located. Um, there were some amendments that were drafted that were very technical in dealing with electronic message centers and how you measure them, and so on and so forth. But the planning commission had, um, heard from the beautification committee and, and the DDA, um, regarding, uh, taking a further look at electronic message centers. Now, the planning commission was tasked with looking at this for shopping centers, but obviously something like this would apply citywide. So the planning commission took those recommendations out and gave themselves two months to figure the electronic message center situation out. At least that's what's being recommended. Section 8213 is the amendments dealing with the shopping centers that were just referenced by Ms. Gruber. Um, the, this was debated by the planning commission at their meeting, and ultimately, they decided to recommend what they had presented. And I think part of their discussion was based upon that was kind of the commission directive to deal with those shopping centers, to find a way to foster economic development on that. And then, the last one, the last amendment was dealing with the, um, visuals and putting them into the ordinance. That's something that we had not had before was actual drawings to help clarify, um, what signs and how measurements are taken and things along those lines. So that's a brief overview of the process. I, I can't really advocate one way or another in my position on that. I'd had sent some correspondence out asking if a planning commissioner would be present tonight to, to possibly answer any of those, uh, questions that are kind of the community debate on what, what size is the perfect size and things along those lines. I'm not aware that we have a planning commissioner present.
What, you, you're used to the term shopping center. How would you define that?
Well, shopping, shopping center was a, was something that was looked at in here. A shopping center would not be the downtown in its entirety. A shopping center, basically, I would consider that we have only a few that would apply in the city of Marquette. You have the, uh, Econo Foods complex, which is a shopping center. Uh, you have, uh, the Village Shopping Mall on Third Street, and then the ShopCo complex could kind of be construed as that, but it, 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 you, you have to look at it on an individual basis to determine how the properties are comprised. Generally, in a shopping center, you have a number of buildings on one parcel of prop, parcel of land. That's not parceled out. If it's parceled out and it has a street frontage, then it's, could be construed as not to be a shopping center because those are individual parcels. So there's different, different situations apply. But that, in a general answer, a shopping center is a conglomeration of buildings on one parcel.
Want to make sure, and just finally, um, how, how would you describe what the impact will this be? What will the impact of this on the historic downtown district?
I guess I can't answer that. I mean, there's a number of things that come into play. Understand primarily what they were dealing with, with shopping centers, and I believe Ms. Gruber's comments were dealing with the shopping center and the general business district itself. That is not, the downtown, uh, district is, is separate from
Okay.
the general business.
So it would have no impact on the downtown?
Well, you still have the issue of emerg, uh, electronic message centers, which is going to be looked at by the planning commission within two months.
Separately. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other commissioner with any questions, discussion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Discussion perhaps. Um, I, I really feel that, um, it would be much better from, from a pure organizational point of view if we had this ordinance that, that, if we had a section of this ordinance or a separate ordinance that directly spoke to the downtown and doesn't get muddled in with the rest of the ordinance. Because as I read through this, I look at things that, that, as I'm reading it, could indeed be applied to downtown, and I don't think would be applicable. So if we take such pride as we do in our downtown, I think it would certainly be very deserving of an ordinance that talks to downtown and what is allowable there and what is not allowable there, as opposed to a more generally umbrella-style ordinance that we seem to be moving to. And in that measure, I am certainly extremely disappointed that, that the electronic sign portion of it, uh, was not presented with this, such that we could make a full determination on it. Because obviously, I don't know anybody I've spoken with in the last several weeks that has had any desire to put electronic messaging centers downtown. But yet, we seem to see this stumbling around a little bit with where the ordinance is regarding that. That, that disappoints me, and I wonder if we shouldn't have a, a resolution tonight that, that makes that directive, uh, that we might consider that, that there will be no electronic messaging center downtown, period, prohibited. And then allow them to, to work as a planning commission with that framework in mind. Um, so again, I'm just, I, I find this difficult, of course, understand we haven't worked with it for a series of months. We're getting it presented relatively cold, to kind of plow our way through it and understand the implications of it. Uh, I think like many citizens, as you drive into a town, you look at this plethora of signs that are flashing at you. You see this, this visual garbage with a full understanding as soon as one business puts up one big sign, the other guy's got to put up another big sign, or he feels like he's not getting his space of, uh, his, his message out either. And we need to figure out how that works better for everybody. Uh, when we use the term shopping center, you know, to most of us, I think that means the Marquette Mall, or that means Westwood Mall. And when we see it applied to a smaller unit of stores, and then see some of the things that are allowable within that for that smaller set of stores, I don't think that's applicable. So again, I would feel more comfortable if this ordinance were, uh, I guess I'll say organized in a fashion that would make it more understandable for everybody, uh, rather than just perhaps professional planners. I've said enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Benzey?
If I could just ask staff, I think, to kind of piggyback off of Fred's comments, I, I think we're dealing with several zoning districts within the downtown area in Third Street. I think, you know, we've got the downtown, we've got the central business district. So, you know, we've also got some of these same zoning areas on the outskirts of town. So I mean, to me, it's, how do we, to me, it's almost like it's a zoning issue in how we zone these areas. I, I think we're talking about Third Street particularly and the downtown, but I don't know if staff has any comment on that.
Well, I can speak specifically to the amendments before you, that a majority of the changes that have been referenced that would permit additional signage fall in 8213F. And that section F only applies to the BG zoning district. Following section applies to the BG zoning district only. So for the sake of aiding the commission, I think if, if you would like to go in a direction of dealing with other changes to the ordinance to specifically address the downtown, I believe that's separate from what you're being tasked with tonight in this recommendation.
Commissioner Benzey, anything further?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to ask staff, kind of following up on what Fred, uh, Commissioner Stonehouse mentioned, would it be possible to do a form-based code for the DDA district, similar to the way we have form-based codes for the Lower Harbor?
Yeah, we, we do have a portion of the downtown is located in the form-based code, but the signs are treated separately via the sign ordinance. But you could do, you know, the sign ordinance itself, like section 8213, is signs permitted by zoning districts. So it takes each one of the zoning districts and then gives certain permission, um, for certain types of signs within that district. So you could do, if, if it was the desire of the commission, you could do something like that. Of course, I would recommend that be a separate exercise. I mean, it's certainly hard to come up with those answers at a meeting, you know, impromptu.
Yeah, I guess it was just kind of a, an esoteric question, that, you know, the idea of, of trying to, to treat the, the downtown and the, and essentially the DDA area as a homogeneous unit, the form-based code might be a tool or vehicle to do so.
But with the purposes of managing expectations, I would also like to say that should the community decide to do something like that, you would have to understand that your sign ordinance, as it's written now, there are pieces that are intertwined across districts that, that apply the same in, in different districts. So you would basically have to take the puzzle apart and put it back together again.
Commissioner Neme, you still have the floor?
I'm, I'm, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schneider?
I guess it's time that I weigh in on this as well. Um, should a commissioner decide to, to make a motion to pass this? I, I don't think that, that I can support it. I like the idea of having a, a larger umbrella ordinance that, that allows things to be, um, a little more uniform, hopefully getting rid of some of the, the clutter, the visual clutter that we have for signs. Um, I'm personally a fan of, of not allowing any signs outside of the actual building and only being flush with the building, but I understand I'm probably in the minority on that one. But I think more importantly, looking at this, which a lot of our audience can't see, there's 26 pages of rules on signs. Um, and personally, I think that that's creating an insane amount of red tape for business owner to try and understand, you know, exactly where they're at and exactly what kind of sign they want, how it fits. And I think it creates a huge burden on staff to be able to delineate that for, for business owners, and I think it makes it really difficult for business owners to be able to identify, um, what they want to do and, and really where it fits. And I don't think that that's really fair to staff and the money that we're spending on staff time or to business owners. And, um, I'd only support it if it really minimized it down to at least, you know, five or six pages and made it very, very clear, uniform across the board for the city.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this back to the planning commission to take under advisement the issues that have been raised during this discussion, particularly take under advisement the issues that have been raised during this discussion, particularly the impact on the DDA or downtown district, the inclusion of the, the signs segment, which has not been included yet, and some of the other issues that have been raised by commissioners during this discussion tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I hate to throw it back in the lap of the planning commission because they've done a lot of work, but a lot of questions have come to this table, and a lot of us have had questions raised to us individually. I, I, I think everybody sitting here is, is concerned about the fact that we have a, a downtown which is very unique, extremely unique, and, and we certainly don't want it to be overtaken by signs, when, when the focus should really be on the unique structures we have. So I, I think for that reason and for the reasons that other commissioners have raised, it would be better if we delayed action and took another shot at it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Schneider, anything further?
Just to thank the planning commission for the work that they've done, putting in, putting into the 26 pages on this, and an apology that we're handing it right back for you, for them to review.
Thank you. Any other commissioner with further discussion? See, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a wish. It would be nice if, as a result of the signed ordinance, we would end up with less signs than more, or smaller signs rather than bigger ones. I mean, if that were the end goal of the ordinance, not the most you can have, I guess, but, I guess you'd have to define it on the upper side of it, but that would be a great outcome, to have less rather than more, to have dimmer rather than brighter, less ostentatious rather than very ostentatious.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Kambenzi?
I, I just can't help but note, but I think we're sending them back a, a very large revision, not, not so much just the signs, but I think we're asking, asking them to look at, at zoning. And I guess I'm torn on this one because I, I feel like there are some things we could change and have this be more of an overall zoning code revision, but as long as we're all aware that we are truly sending this back and could put quite a bit of work back on their plate, I, I hesitate to do that, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Just, I would say, you know, I, I think there may be ways that this can come back to us fairly quickly to deal with part of it, but not all of it. In other words, you know, Dennis made a point that this was intended to apply to a very limited areas, excuse me. And I think if, if, if we can be assured of that, that, that this is not going to affect the downtown, that, you know, we could go through this in stages and, and possibly still, within short order, adopt these particular ordinances, recognizing that there's more to come.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Namie?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Kambenzi. You know, we had a weekend to look at this. It was, it was a lot to do. The planning commission spent a lot of time on this, and I, I got to think that they've given us a product that, that would be passable. I, I, you know, if we can give it back to them to, perhaps, what it means is that we, we need to be educated more, maybe there's some tweaking they need to do, but I just hesitate throwing something else on their plate. It's, it's hard for them to hold up their platter right now. And to give them back, I'm, I'm sure they all, you know, kind of made a sigh of relief when they, they passed this on to us. But, so I'm not going to support the motion, but I, I guess it's not, you know, it's six one, half does the other, but I, you know, I, I trust the planning commission. They've, they've served us in good stead, you know, many, time and time again, and I've got to, to think that they, they gave it their best consideration more. They certainly had more of a chance than we did, and perhaps maybe that's what we need, is a little more time to, to raise our comfort level with, with the product that we have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Namie. Commissioner Kambenzi?
I guess I would be okay sending it back if we are specific as to what we want them to look at, meaning, I think our concern is the downtown area, you know, and Third Street corridor. And I mean, I, I think if we say specifically our area of concern, so that we don't just throw it back at them and they take it from ground zero, I think I would be more comfortable with that, rather than just sending it back and saying, "Not much." So I don't know if the, the motion maker would want to be more specific or, or the person that seconded it, but I think we need to, I think we can help them, the more specific we are with things that, that don't quite sit right with us.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me ask Dennis just really quickly, because in listening to this, I'm mindful of the challenge Commissioner Kambenzi's before us. I've heard the commission say both that they are dissatisfied that it wasn't all of the information, including the deferred portion here presented tonight. I've heard exactly the opposite. I've heard that they want to take it apart and take a look at it piece by piece, and I've heard that they want it to be unified across the whole commission. And so I would shudder to send back the general mood of the commission as guidance for where they'd like the planning commission to end up. But that being said, I've also heard that with the exception of the downtown area, or essentially the DDA area now with the Third Street corridor, that there really aren't any other issues that people are raising. To that, to that extent, Dennis, is there a way where, with some modification to the existing deliberation from planning commissioner, the language chosen, it would be a simple fix where, in effect, the code would apply everywhere but the DDA area?
I don't think it's that easy, to be honest with you, and sorry for that answer, but I, I mean, again, it's, you have, you, you know, if you adopt these and say, "These apply except for the DDA," which we're going to put some kind of moratorium on, I mean, that, that needs to be researched a little bit. I'm sure the city attorney would like to think about that a little bit, rather than have us answer it here this evening. So it's, that's not something that we would be able to square away tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Just curious if my fellow commissioners would be interested in scheduling yet another special meeting or a work session to discuss this more specifically, to give them a specific direction. I guess my idea would be not having the motion to send it back to them, but actually having a much longer discussion when we do not have a, a full room and an agenda on the table that we can, I guess, discuss how, what we're really looking for out of this, rather than get into it this evening.
Is there a second to that?
There wasn't a minute.
That wasn't, okay. Commissioner Ryan?
You know, I, I was just going to say, I, you know, I made my motion as a way that I thought we could move forward. It didn't appear to me that we would get support for a motion to approve this. I, I was just trying to open the door for it to get back and to deal with some of the concerns that have been raised here and possibly come back to us again, but I don't know if we can pass any motion tonight, the way, the way I'm listening to the session around the table.
Well, there is a motion on the floor, though. There is a motion. There is going to be a vote eventually.
Yes.
But I think the plan, I think Mr. Stackwitz might have another solution if you wanted to hear that.
I certainly would.
Is that all right, City Manager?
City Manager?
I, I would, in thinking about this, I, I think the proper way that you could do it to preserve the, the integrity of the process, recognizing that we've already noticed a public hearing, we're in a public hearing phase. If you defeat this tonight, we have to start that wheel again and do notifications and everything else. I believe Robert's Rules of Order would allow you to postpone a decision on this until a time certain. You can pick that time certain. And in between now and that time certain, I would recommend that, that maybe the city commission and planning commission have a work session or some kind of way, so the planning commission can better explain to you what they did and, and the purpose behind what they looked at.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to ask if it's appropriate for me to withdraw my motion.
No, I think at this point, we'll, we can vote on the motion. If it's defeated, then we can do, we can go with the motion to postpone to a definite time.
I'd recommend that we vote against my motion, and I don't know if I'm allowed to vote against it or not, but...
You can vote against it, you just can't argue against it.
Okay.
So, City Clerk, did you want to?
This by majority votes into the motion to postpone, or to remand, rather, yeah.
Now, this is a motion.
Remand to the time line.
No, this motion first has to be denied, right?
There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Schneider.
That would be a defeat.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes. Wait, wait a minute. I'm sorry. No, I'll withdraw that, yes.
Okay.
We could have a token.
Yeah, right. Token, yes.
Okay. All opposed, say no.
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 Motion is, yeah, dies from, less than a majority affirmative for the motion. It's defeated, and it's six to zero, so Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we adjourn this public hearing pending further discussion between the commission and the planning commission.
Do you want?
Would be a motion to postpone to, and then pick a specific date.
Are you comfortable with a, a certain time?
Well, within the next month.
First meeting in, first meeting in May?
First meeting in May. I think it's, I think it's really fun when people get to see democracy in action.
Yeah.
There's a lot of transparency here. We'll never be accused of doing things in advance.
Second?
My support.
Okay. There's a support by Commissioner Schneider. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Anything further, Commissioner Schneider? So what I have here is a motion to postpone the sign ordinance as proposed and move it to the first meeting in May. Is this correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
I move we adjourn.
With that, we'll move to number two, resolution, Next Michigan Development District, Delta, Marquette Counties Resolution of Support. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Preamble, the local units of government in Delta and Marquette County of Central Upper Peninsula encourage the creation of a Next Michigan Development District for the purpose of bringing one of the state's most powerful economic development incentives to the Upper Peninsula region by requiring the Michigan Strategic Fund to designate at least one Next Michigan Development District above the 43rd parallel that exists, that consists of two contiguous counties with combined population of between 100 and 110,000. Whereas the units of government in Delta and Marquette Counties are promoting a regional collaboration and partnership in the course of exploring the tremendous opportunities available by the creation of a Central Upper Peninsula Economic Development Engine, has defined in the Next Michigan Development Act, number 275 of 2010, which will promote economic growth focused on multimodal transportation. And whereas a micropolitane economic development strategy is a vital regional approach in growing and attracting business to the Upper Peninsula, and whereas the Central Upper Peninsula needs a micropolitane-type regional economic development policy and Next Michigan Development District, which supports a diverse set of stakeholder, community, and business leaders, and support from the local elected officials and from the executive branch to realize this significant and unique opportunity. And whereas the Upper Peninsula is a geographically and economically diverse portion of the state of Michigan, in general terms, the area is too urban to be called rural and too rural to be called urban. And whereas, as individual units of government in the Upper Peninsula, our area does not have the economic or political presence of larger cities in the Lower Peninsula, but nevertheless, our region has an opportunity to increase the Central Upper Peninsula's presence and our ability to increase activity in manufacturing, distribution, and transportation, transporting products and raw material supplies. And whereas the Central Upper Peninsula is a prime candidate for a regional economic development zone, in, in that the region has a total combined population of 110,000 plus or minus, approximately 33 key manufacturers and major employers who employ 15,175,000 people, more or less, and a diverse multimodal transportation system in place. And whereas the units of government in Delta and Marquette Counties understand that further collaboration and partnering is needed, and identifying best practices in other parts of the state and throughout the country must be identified for potential use within the Central Upper Peninsula. State and regional economic development, planning, and policy must be aligned to provide a framework for organizing, organizing effective policies and investment. And elected officials, communities, and economic development stakeholders must come together in a collaborative model to bring these powerful economic development resources to the Upper Peninsula. And whereas these opportunities include the potential to create unprecedented, unprecedented economic development by way of locating tomorrow's economic powerhouses in this region today, and creating high, excuse me, high-paying jobs to ensure the attraction and retention of highly trained and skilled workforce, to ensure our citizens can receive an education in Michigan and put their talents to use in this great state, and to achieve a unique investment that reflects the impact felt by manufacturers with the long-term perspectives, with, with a long-term perspective. Now therefore, be, be it resolved that the city of Marquette does hereby endorse and support bipartisan legislation to amend Next Michigan Development, Next Michigan Development Act, Public Act 275 of 2010, MCL 125.295, 2951, for the purpose of bringing one of the state's most powerful economic development incentives to the Upper Peninsula region by requiring the Michigan Strategic Fund to designate at least one Next Michigan Development District above the 43rd parallel that consists of two contiguous counties that has a combined population of between 100,000 and 110,000, adopted this eighth day of April 2013, and signed Johnny DePietre, mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. At this time, I'm going to welcome two new...
Your Honor, we need a motion on that to approve the resolution.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion to approve that? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider? Commissioner Namie, anything further?
Nothing further. I think the clerk said it all.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Nothing further.
Any other commissioner? With that, there's a motion in the second to adopt the resolution as Next Michigan Development District, Delta, Marquette Counties, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you for that. And at this time, I welcome two new members, Dwayne Nygard, Investment Advisory Board, and James Jack, Peter White, Public Library Board. Will you meet me up there at the podium? Welcome aboard, you two new members. We appreciate it very much, my fellow commissioners and I's, for, for volunteering, come on to the board. And Dwayne Nygard, Nygard is, is on Investment Advisory Board, and what he's going to do is look on finding ways for us to get more interest in a lot of this stuff, and I appreciate that very much. My fellow commissioners appreciate it very much, and the city appreciates it. And with that, we present that city pen to you for coming aboard. Thank you again. And thank you, James, for coming aboard on Peter White Public Library Board. I know that you got a lot of interest in this, so we appreciate it very much, and welcome aboard. And here's your pen, and we thank you very much. Give him a little round of applause for volunteering. Thank you. We'll now move to reappointments. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor, there are only reappointments this evening. Susan A. Cox to the Sister City Advisory Committee for a term ending April first, two thousand and sixteen, and two appointments to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee, Joan Miller and Jamie Strand, both with terms ending April four, or, yeah, April first, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Like to make, move that we accept the reappointments as read.
Thank you. Uh, is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schneider, anything further?
Just that I appreciate the continued service.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further, thank you.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none at this time, I'll ask the question, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, motion passes six to zero, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in item being moved up on, on agenda at the mayor's discretion. Please state your name and physical address, anybody wishing to address the commission at this time? Over here, Bob. This is public comment.
My name is Bob Frack, I live at three thirty-two Rock Street. I initially wanted to reserve time to speak on item four D. If it's proper now, it'd be number twelve on the pump-out rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Claire McGregor of thirteen thirteen Waldo Street, and I would like to request permission to speak on topic number six.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Janelle Butterey, I live at one five one five Fitch Avenue. I would also like to request time to speak on item number six.
Thank you.
Phil Kanaamides, I will be here to speak on item number five.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission during public comment at this time?
Jamie Tomcheck, two three five North Big Creek, I'd like to speak on number twelve.
Thank you.
I'm Brenda Corrine, one sixty North Bertrand Lake Road from Gwin. And I would like to, well, I'll just go right through mine now, I was going to save mine for number twelve also, but first of all, I want to share my feelings about the proposed pump-out rates. I think fifteen dollars for under thirty gallons is absolutely outrageous. Every place else in the U.P. is five dollars, you know, most places. Isle Royale isn't even that much, and they have to truck all that sewage across the lake and have it processed on land, so. One of the big things that I also would like to bring up, I mentioned this at the Harbor Advisory Committee meeting last time I was there, is the fact that it says that our pump-out fees should, slip renters should not be charged pump-out fees. I asked specifically at that time if the, if the city commission has ever made formal consent to start charging us, because we've been being charged for six years as slip renters. And he said yes, that that was. I have gone through all the city minutes that I can find for the past six years to see where it was approved, that they start charging slip holders, and I have not found that. But yet, when you go to the city's website, just for last year's adopted fees, still says right in there, no charge for slip renters, printed off today off of your website. We've been being charged for six years. Also says last year's rate was ten dollars. At Cinder Pond, I believe they're being charged five dollars, at Prescott, we were being charged six. So very disappointed in the discrepancies in the information that continued to happen there. Uh, next, I'd like to talk about the slip fees being increased this year at Prescott particularly, because this marina is going to be shut down for a good portion of the season. And I just don't understand how you can justify raising rates right in the middle of a construction year. I mean, most other businesses, service providers, things like that, might offer a reduced rate because of the disruption of service that you're going to have throughout the year. Saw the article that came out in the Mining Journal that said, you know, the boaters understand this, because, you know, and it basically kind of said, because we didn't oppose it. But we have been opposing it. We've been opposing it at the Harbor Advisory Committee meetings, and I don't think that information is getting here. When the recommendations come through, they're not saying, there is people there saying, hey, they're not happy about this. Another big thing that came up, Greg Bucauma said he sent emails out to all the city commissioners, asked that I would address this tonight, as they could not because they are not in town. He told me that three commissioners that he spoke with asked him, how come nobody shows up at the meetings? And that was very disappointing, because last year this time, January, February, March, we were showing up at the meetings. I even asked to be put on the agenda on behalf of our group, which is Prescott Concerned Citizens. We did that, did a short presentation of the things that we were concerned about and working on and hoping to go proactively forward with. And at the end, when it came to the roundtable, I mean, everybody was very respectful, but said, you know what, I kind of came to the wrong place, we need to go to the Harbor Advisory Committee meetings. We have been to every single one since that meeting in March last year. Somebody from our group has been at every meeting. Now, I kind of feel like the system's failing us a little bit, because I don't think the information that we bring is getting to the Harbor Advisory Committee, or, you know, to the city commission. So we kind of feel that we almost need to go to both. The last thing was, today I seen the Mining Journal article that came out, said everything looks like it's going to be on track. I think Mr. Zuger said that everything was phased to as scheduled to go next spring, this spring.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. And when we were at the Harbor Advisory Committee, that was one thing, I have a whole group of people that are concerned about this launch ramp. I asked the question specifically, specifically, and he said it'll be happening in two thousand and fifteen. Got that word out to all hundred and six of our group members, and now today in the paper, it says it's going to be going in the spring as scheduled. So the discrepancy of information is very concerning to our group, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the commission during public comment?
Jeff Verito, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on item nine, these are my opinions. March twenty-fifth, only one member mentioned fluoride in his closing comments, saying staff is comfortable with the safety limits. Whose evaluation of a chemical is more credible, our staffs or the chemists at a favorite, a famous laboratory? Mayor Minutes of Research uncovered that Marquette adds forty percent more than the revised recommended amount. Come on, folks, get with the program, please reduce our poisoning to point seven milligrams per liter. A March twenty-fourth article covered Dan Beneshek's Natural Resource Committee hearing. It's hard to tell if the newspaper biased the report or if the road commission manager lied. He's quoted saying the EPA overreached in several areas to kill the five ninety-five project. County wrote five ninety-five would have had a positive impact on the mining, logging, recreation, and tourist industries. He then mentioned the governmental bipartisan support for the project at local, state, and federal levels. In his words, as a local official, it was very frustrating to deal with the EPA throughout this project. Beneshek is quoted saying, frankly, it seems like these Washington regulators have a personal agenda and it's killing jobs right here in Upper Michigan. The road commission proposed preserving two point five square miles bordering a wilderness area and national forest, producing a twenty-five to one wetland destruction to preservation ratio, end of quote. This claim is absurd. The two point five square miles is already there. It replaces not one inch of what paving twenty-two miles of road would destroy. The road manager further stated, and you can see from all our public support that we had on the political end of things, that it was something the people wanted and something we wanted as a community. It's obvious that none of these officials nor the reporter bothered to hang around to hear what the constituents had to say, nor did they take the time to review the record, to learn that roughly two-thirds of the over one hundred who spoke at the August twenty-fourth hearing opposed the road for almost as many sound reasons as those who spoke. Why then would the road commission waste one thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars of those people's money to mislead officials in D.C. through the same alleged pattern of deceit that some of you use by not divulging critical known facts that supersede the validity of your viewpoints? August twenty-fourth and January thirty-first, Mr. Ryan is quoted using the same spiel to support the road. Then on March twenty-fifth, he referred to a mysterious parcel that was sneaked onto the master plan revision map as designated for development. This map was revised without the knowledge of a single city or planning commissioner. Research revealed that a clandestine meeting between Gerald Peterson and his submissive staff, during that, two public preserves were earmarked for possible rezoning. No due public process whatsoever concerning two preserves. It's just like some of you to latch on to this type of deceit and roll with it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening, here in Malachi, near Marquette Drive. All I have to say is hogwash. The current, the previous speaker should remain on the current topic that's discussed in the city commission, rather than badgering the city commission on unrelated topics. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address.
My name is Tim Hepner, I live at three thirteen County Road, five ten Nagani. I would like to reserve time to speak on the agenda item twelve, the rate increases. I would also like to make one statement that with the proposed dredging and potential closure of Prescott Marina for the spring session up until possibly June, I have been researching through other marinas, the option of getting a slip in Houghton or Munising or other areas. And the overwhelming consent, because they've been getting a lot of phone calls, is that Marquette is becoming a non-boater friendly community. So I thought I would pass that on to you, because that's the consent that's happening in other towns in our areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Please state your name, physical address, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Beck, I'm at one zero zero five Aloe Way in Marquette. I just wanted to address the commission briefly about the plans for trucking and trucking through the city of Marquette. I had the chance to attend the Trucking Summit last week at Lake Fiorina. And for all the proactive talk of looking for a solution and asking for the township to perhaps step up and accommodate an alternate trucking plan through the city, I feel that this is extremely short-sighted on the part of the city commission. Thinking back to the history of Marquette, I hate to think of what the city would look like if the city's founding fathers attempted to block and obstruct shipment and movement of ore and materials through this city, hub of commerce and industry. I can understand the concerns of safety that we have along this new truck route, a truck route running from County Road five fifty and up Wright Street. However, the city has known since January of two thousand and eleven that Kennicott intended to use this current truck route. It's been twenty-seven months, twenty-eight months now, and only now is the city commission addressing public safety at the intersection of Wright Street and Sugarloaf. I would hope that you can take some active steps at addressing truck traffic at that intersection. There are more trucks running through that intersection today. Northern Michigan University is doing construction and demolition on Northern's campus, there is additional heavy truck traffic running through that intersection now. What has the city done to date along Wright Street? You've increased the speed limit, five miles an hour, and there are included sections just east of Wrightley Street and Sugarloaf where there are no sidewalks at all. I saw people walking in the street just the other day. So I think that if the city commission is truly concerned about public safety at, with trucks coming through the city, that you should take a proactive step and plan for those trucks, address the issues of public safety along the Wright Street truck route, and also look at the extension of the McClellan Avenue truck route. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Please state your name.
Dave Braser, three ninety-five Meska Avenue. I just want to say something about the pump-out. I feel that with the hike going that high, with the smaller boats, you're going to see, you got people with their kids during the weekend, larger families, they fill up thing maybe, maybe two times a weekend, and being at fifteen dollars a pump-out, you know, I think you're finding a lot more of the waste going into the lake, because people are saying, you know, heck with it, I'm not paying that. Also, this lady had said earlier that they paid six out there, last year, we paid five. At our marina, I paid five one time, six the next time, back to five. I never knew what I was paying. The people that worked there, half of them don't know how to run the pump, I think that's one reason why it's broke all the time. It's just getting out of hand on there, and people are getting tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Please state your name, physical address, please.
Jim Hetrick, one forty-one Nigie Road, Nagani Township. Just one more thing on the confusion on the Prescott project. We have been told anything from June to maybe August, you may be able to get your slips, but you will not maintain your slip if you don't pay us your eighteen hundred dollars, in my particular case. And if we already know that at least June, why would you have to pay eighteen hundred dollars when you could be using that looking for an alternative, but we don't know when it's going to be done, and we don't know when you're going to get your refund on the prorated amount? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public comment. And move to number four, consent agenda. City Clerk?
Excuse me, yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen commission meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of three hundred four thousand ninety-two dollars and one cent. And item C, award the bid for large water meter testing and repair to hydro meter of Davisburg, Michigan, at the unit prices bid.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider, anything further?
Nope.
Commissioner Ryan?
No, routine.
Any other commissioner comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the question, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, motion passes six to zero, thank you. We'll move to new business at this time. Number five, lease agreement with Nicholas Economists. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, this is the background. At its April twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven meeting, the city commission approved a lease agreement for a boat slip, which lease included naming the coaster two as market official flagship. In lieu of monetary rent, the agreement required the lease to provide the city and/or its residents any combination of goods, services, and funds in an amount not less than two thousand seven hundred six dollars per year, which amount had been deemed to be fair market rental value of the boat slip rental for that year. The agreement was renewed on April ninth, two thousand and twelve. Recently, staff met with the owner of the vessel to discuss updating and extending the lease agreement. The proposed lease, which is attached, is essentially the same as, as the previous lease with foregoing, or with the following substantive changes. Item one, the term of the lease is changed from six months to thirty-six months, beginning May first, two thousand and thirteen, through April thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Item two, the fair market value of the boat slip rental is determined to be the sum of six thousand eighty dollars for each twelve-month period of the lease. Fiscal effect, the Marina Fund would not realize six thousand eighty dollars for each consecutive twelve-month period of the lease. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement, waive the boat slip rental fee for the period of May one, two thousand and thirteen, through April thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with the vessel owner, Nicholas Economides, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners?
There's a-
Thank you. Come on up for your comment. Thank you. You can come over here for public, for your comments.
I think we have a presentation.
Okay. City Clerk?
Your Honor, while the presentation is being set up, just to make clear, because the charter requires a lease agreement to be approved at the meeting, not at the meeting it's introduced at, whatever motion is made to approve would have to be a motion to postpone the approval or the recommendation to approve to the next meeting, just so that's clear.
Okay, after the presentation, I'll turn it over to my fellow commissioners. Thank you, City Attorney.
At this time, I can introduce our, our crew to the commissioners. We've got Craig Kitchen- We've got Craig Kitchen.
Nick, could you use the microphone so it'll be audio?
There we go. Is that, is that good?
Yes.
Craig Kitchen. He's our, our, oh boy, he's a retired therapist from the Child and Family Services, and he works with a youth program. And then we have Ty Felton, Thanos Economies, and Cyrus Economies.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for the opportunity. I've just put together, we put together a little presentation tonight, just to kind of highlight some of the things that being flagship for Marquette has meant and some of the benefits. So, go ahead, Mr. Bloom. Coaster Two, which was Marquette city flagship the last two years. We run under a business called Superior Odyssey, which believes in its community, supports youth, promotes the city of Marquette in a very unique manner, and gives back. Since the business started five years ago, it has given over 10% of its gross income to local businesses and nonprofits each year. I think one of the main highlights and one of the things that benefits the city most is its historic value. The fact that this vessel is, is on the National Register of Historic Places really can put Marquette and has on the map. If you do a Google search, Marquette will come up if you mention any kind of historic places and historic designation. The national historic location is the highest honor given by the federal government to a cultural resource worthy of preservation. Marquette is the only city on the Great Lakes to have a national historic vessel as its flagship. Coaster Two earned its role because of the transformation of coasting schooners hauling cargo to hauling, to transfer to sailing for pleasure. It's a wooden mahogany-hulled teak deck. The boat is absolutely detailed and authentic, and it's, it's the real deal. When she sits in the harbor, you know, people stop and take notice. She's become quite a local icon, favorite subject for a lot of photos. Most of the photos in our presentation tonight were taken by locals and shared with us. There's economic impact to having Coaster Two as your flagship. We've had over 500 passengers sail with us in 2012. Some guests come to Michigan to Marquette just to sail aboard Coaster Two. Superior Odyssey employs six seasonal, part-time employees. We utilize over 14, directly 14 Marquette businesses. Coaster Two has been featured in 14 publications, five TV news spots, three radio interviews since the flagship designation. In the summer of 2012, Coaster Two's sails were hoisted and lowered 250 times. This was a photo taken of our first mate Thanos a couple of years back when a former Miss Michigan, Nicole, gonna butcher her last name, Blazcek, hoisted the sails with us. We offer a variety of sailing opportunities. And we're out there almost every day giving people and customers a unique perspective of Marquette, as well as informing of them, informing them of local attractions and businesses. One of the key components and things we're most proud of is our work with youth and education. We have opportunities for groups to meet aboard Coaster for the city, such groups, groups as the Travel Writers, the Marquette County Convention Visitors Bureau, the Japanese delegate and city crew from the Superior Productions have been a few of the groups that we've had aboard. This past summer, we had the Ensign National, U.S. National Race come to Marquette's harbor because our sailing is so great here in Marquette. And Coaster Two is well-founded, sea kindly, and up for the challenges of Lake Superior. Coaster Two is a sailing ambassador. She travels the Great Lakes representing Marquette. She is welcomed and treated like royalty. People gather to hear her stories from the little schooner on Lake Superior. The Marquette flag is proudly displayed all season on the portside mainspreader, while at dock, underway, and at festivals. We bring supplies, information, and materials about Marquette, and we keep them both down at Matson Park, and as we travel, we bring those with and hand them out. Here's a few of the festivals that we've attended in the past. And this year, we're really excited to be part of the Duluth Tall Ship Festival. There will be approximately 500,000 participants coming to that event. We've also been part of the Michigan Schooner Festival down in Traverse City, and we try to get to the Houghton Hancock Bridge Fest every year. We've become a place to provide some opportunity. Through our crew and training program, we work with some other tall ships. An experience that was gained aboard Coaster Two has given two of our crew members the opportunity to sail with tall ships. Thanos was aboard the Pride of Baltimore and hired as a professional crewman in there for three months. Also, local Ty Felton was aboard the Niagara after the summer. He was able to go down there, and they have a wonderful youth program that they run. So he's brought back some experience from that, and we made some really good connections. It's always fun as other flagships and other tall ships come into town. It's really neat that Marquette has one that can go out there and welcome them and be part of that. Here we are, just last summer, as the Niagara came in, we went out and welcomed them. Coaster Two is routinely out there on the lake, providing eyes, ears, radio communication, and support for distress. The captain and crew inform the passengers of the riptide or coastal rip, rip, rip and tidal currents, where they occur, and general safety afloat. We work closely with the National Atmospheric and NOAA Office here locally. Coaster Two fills out a lot of reports. We've taken a lot of their experts out sailing with us to try to get a feel for the kind of reports, the documents they need to help them be better reporters. So we gather a lot of data, record it, and turn those reports into them, and they really do utilize it and appreciate it. On August 30, 2012, Coaster Two Captain Nico, crew of Coaster Two, the Marquette City Police, Fire Department, Marquette County Sheriff's Department, local EMS, other civilian boaters, as well as the city lifeguards, all took part in a water search and mock drowning We have future plans that include, should be 2013, this year, they're going to have a wooden boat show included in the Harbor Festival, and will be part of the organizing and bringing some of our own ship, boats down and being part of that. We'll also be part of the Great Lakes-St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, and that brings a lot of awareness to Lake Superior. What better way of connecting people to the water and showing that, that Lake Superior means so much to the city is to have a flagship that can represent that. We also will be doing some work with the Beauty and Restoration Committee, and we're going to increase our youth at risk or youth programs by building a Mackinac boat with Coaster Two offers the city of Marquette, its residents, and those who come out to visit, an opportunity to look back on the harbor and see a national treasure, a glimpse of how things were. She promotes the city like no other, a traveling ambassador connecting people from all over the world, hosting special outings, collecting data, providing safety education. These are just a few of the ways she has served the city as flagship. The potential is vast. It's been a pleasure serving as flagship for Marquette, and we look forward to continuing as well as discovering more ways in which we can serve.
Thank you. Before I leave, I'd like to open this up, see if any of my fellow commissioners have any questions. Commissioner Schneider?
And actually, my question is for, for City Attorney. It's my understanding that to review a lease agreement and approve a lease agreement needs to be at different meetings. Is that correct?
The decision on the lease agreement has to be made at a different meeting, a subsequent meeting, but you can certainly discuss it. It's introduced here tonight, but any decision has to be postponed to the next meeting.
Commissioner Schneider?
Well, in that case, I'll defer the approval of the lease agreement to the next. I would like to make a motion to defer the approval of a lease agreement to the next meeting barring discussion here.
That would be April 29.
Correct.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second that.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider, anything further?
Just a little bit, just for discussion's sake. You know, I definitely think that you guys provide a very valuable and beautiful service to, to Marquette as a whole. And I've got a question for staff. In 2012, we gave fair market value to that space at $2,700, and this year, we're looking at just over $6,000. And I'm wondering why it jumped so high, a little more than double within one year.
Thank you. Let me take the first part, and then I'll ask our Community Services Director to fill in if we need to. When they first came before us, we didn't have a commercial business price per se. We had the seawall price, but at the time, the coaster wasn't our flagship. She wasn't on our seawall. You know, for example, the IRQ III wasn't on our seawall. The only non-recreational vessel that was there was the Lake Char, which supports the fishery, fishery service. And at that time, we hadn't had the experience with the flagship that we had before, so we didn't really know completely what the fee structure would look like at the seawall, and also how successful the investment in this partnership the city would be making would be. So subsequently now, we've got a lot of, a lot more experience two, three years on with having commercial vessels operating out of the lower harbor. We have a better understanding of what the per foot rates need to be for those commercial vessels, and so this really reflects some of the increase in value that we get from having those vessels operating those, those businesses out of our lower harbor. But maybe to clarify specifically how we came up with the methodology for that, I'll ask Director Zuger to speak up.
Thank you. The, the rate structure that you have is a rate structure for non-commercial vessels. The DNR has a requirement for all commercial vessels to be twice the seasonal rate or transient rate. And the commercial sort of definition is, you know, any vessel that takes payment or is used for, you know, transporting merchandise, those types of things. And so any, any commercial vessel that's in our grant and aid funded facilities, we, we charge double. And that's a requirement of our grant and aid agreement.
Anything further, Commissioner Schneider?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mr. Zuger, probably can help me to understand this. The requirement from the DNR, or DEQ, no, DNR Waterways Commission for rate doubling, as I understand it, only applies to grant and aid marinas and would not apply to our city wall. In other words, Matson Park and City of Marquette has nothing to do with the, with the Michigan Waterways Commission. So the doubling of rates has no applicability to that, as I would understand it.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate, but in the fee structure, we do recognize commercial rate on the, on the bulkhead.
So really, the commercial rate on the bulkhead is one then determined by the city of Marquette and not Michigan Waterways.
That's accurate.
Right. Thank you.
Any other commissioner with any questions? Commissioner Naimi?
I don't have any questions, Your Honor, but I, I guess I don't support this. I haven't supported it in the two or three years that we've had this. I, I think the Coaster Two is a beautiful ship. I think it's unique, but I, I just can't see the utility to the city to, to forgive the rate when we charge. You know, we're going to try to triple the, the cost of pumpouts. We charge for, for birthing the boats at the marina. We charge a, a commercial charter carrier twice the, the slip rates to, to berth at our marina. There's been promises, and I'm not saying that, that Coaster Two didn't carry out its side of the bargain. It, it didn't, but it's, it's probably the city's fault that it wasn't. You know, we didn't get the, the participation in safety things, except for maybe one time. We didn't get the, the sails except for one time, and we didn't get the, the dive, the dive with the police department at all. And so it's, you know, we're just not getting the value for, for the, what, the value that we're giving Coaster Two. So I can't support this. And, and if we go from, you know, roughly, last, last year it was $2,800, I think the $2,700 is an average for the two years. If we're going to go to $6,000, you know, we're certainly not getting twice the value of the, of the, from Coaster Two, if we're not getting the value in the first place. So I can't support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Naimi. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, again, this year, I will support this. I think it's a unique opportunity for the city of Marquette, and as far as this value, it's apparently, it's just made up. You know, I mean, it's, it's not based on anything. We could say it was $10,000. We could say it was $20,000. I mean, you know, we've already said that. It's, it's kind of based on something, but it's, it's not a real figure, and, and they're offering things in return, including maintaining its place on the historic register, it's maintaining its place as a flagship for the city of Marquette, representing the city, maintaining its relationship with the National Weather Service, and the, the relationship with the city to provide opportunities at least for our police department to make use of it, Coast Guard to make use of it, and, and for certain education in the city of Marquette. So, you know, I, I'm not convinced that we're losing whatever amount of rental we put on that by, by providing this space for the Coaster Two. I think it might be different if it was taking up a slip in our marina, but it's not.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Naimi?
I have one more point. When reviewing the lease, it, if I'm, I'm, perhaps I'm wrong, but it doesn't seem like there's any out in the lease. We're giving a, a lease for three years, which we cannot cancel. Except for the fault. Oh, yeah, it's a three-year lease. Right. It is. If we had another opportunity to come up in that seawall, we, we couldn't meet it because we leased out that space. Right. And that's, I mean, that's the way it was drafted. It will depend on what happens next week as to what actually gets finalized. I guess my, I, I guess I would like to see us put a cancellation clause in there. I don't think we should enter into any lease ever without some sort of cancellation clause to, if something were to change in the future. That could be part of a motion next, next meeting.
Any other commissioner for discussion on this? Seeing none? I'll read the motion by Commissioner Schneider, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to move the lease agreement with Coaster Two and Nicholas Economies to April 29. Is that correct, Commissioner Schneider?
Yes.
Can you agree with that, Commissioner Stonehouse? Okay, with that, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion passes five to one with Commissioner Naimi voting no. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to the Dead River Derby. I know there's some interest here, and, and there is some girls, I'll have you come up in a few minutes, but I'll start off with agenda number six, Dead River Derby. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the Dead River Derby has requested the use of dry floor time at Lake, Lake Fiorina. The use will be for daily practice and five events. Staff reviewed the request and determined the need to cover costs of staff time and facility operations. Staff recommends establishing a fee that includes $30 per hour for up to four hours for practice, practice use only, a half-day rate of $675 for Russell Arena, and $425 for the Olson Arena for events that are less than four hours. Staff was intending to present an hourly dry floor fee schedule in the 2012 Staff was intending to present an hourly dry floor fee schedule in the fiscal year 2013-14 budget hearings, but due to the timing of the request and lack of fee structure, staff is asking the commission to consider the fee at this time. Fiscal effect, Lakeview Arena will realize additional revenues of $5,445 with this approval. Recommendation, establish a dry floor rate at Lakeview Arena of $30 per hour for practices less than four hours, and a half-day rate of $675 for the Russell Arena, $425 for the Olson Arena for events less than four hours, and develop a use agreement with Dead River Derby. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Girls, I know there's two of yous that want to come up, whoever wants to come up first, please state your name and physical address.
Hello, I am Claire McGregor of 1313 Waldo Street. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Derby and what our league tries to accomplish. The roller derby that we play is not the sports entertainment derby of the 70s. It's an actual sport now. It's a very real full-contact women's sport that demands a high level of commitment, athleticism, and strategy. Nothing is staged, nothing is fake, and we play for keeps. Right now, roller derby is the fastest-growing sport in the U.S. Since its resurgence in the year 2000, this has been a for-women, by-women endeavor. Roller derby has been a skater-owned and operated global presence with over 1,400 leagues worldwide. Women want derby, and they're making it happen. I think that's important to recognize, that what you're up against sometimes. The U.S. has a national team of all-stars that competed in and won the world championship. It's big here. It's big enough now that the Olympic Games Committee is considering adding it as an event to the 2020 Summer Olympic schedule. Junior Derby is the new frontier of the sport. The talent coming from our youth will quickly outpace today's seasoned veterans. It's entirely possible that this will become a professional women's sport in the future, and that's kind of roller derby in a nutshell. And now I'd like to tell you a little bit about our league and the sport locally. Michigan has 27 roller derby leagues currently. Four of them are in the U.P., which is substantial considering our small populace. Dead River Derby has been working to build a strong foundation for our sport for the last year. We are currently the largest league in the U.P. with 42 members. Since July of 2012, we have had 57 individuals sign up for our fresh meat training programs. Our skater potential level is fairly high. Additionally, we have had to create a recreational membership option to accommodate the needs of individuals who want to get involved with the league in some capacity while they wait for the next fresh meat training season. Since this league was founded, we have had league skaters from outside of Marquette tell us that they are seriously considering relocating to Marquette now that there is a roller derby league here. We have had skaters from Houghton regularly make the trip to Marquette to attend our practices prior to starting their own league up in the Kiwanah. We've had a tremendous turnout last weekend at our Talk Derby To Me event. What amazes me is that people of all ages, such diverse backgrounds and varying skill level, can all come together and get so much fulfillment and enjoyment out of being involved in this sport. I think a lot of that has to do with how hard we work at upholding our mission statement, and I'm going to kind of go through those points, and how we support that. Promoting the health of women. Roller derby is an excellent workout, and playing the sport requires a high level of dedication, strategy, and training. Promoting the sense of self-confidence and high self-esteem in women. Women need to know that we can be more than mothers and wives or career women. The sense of accomplishment and the positive changes that come out of being catapulted outside of your comfort zone and landing on your feet, and I'm speaking literally and figuratively here, well, those personal victories are essential for anyone's emotional well-being. Promoting and cultivating social interaction and fellowship among members. The camaraderie and bonds that form between the diverse and eclectic personalities in our league cannot be found elsewhere because Derby doesn't judge. You come as you are, and we love you for it. We have a little bit of everything, and it totally works for us, because shared mutual terror in the face of danger creates a strong sense of unity and support, no matter what your background, and because unfortunately, not everyone gets the support they need to thrive in their daily lives. Unfortunately, the Derby family is here for you. Promoting your involvement in the sport of roller derby. Many of us are parents, and we all have a soft spot for kids, but the opportunity to be strong, positive female role models for young girls and boys alike, we're doing this through the sport of roller derby, and it's the greatest privilege we have as skaters. Countless parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles have approached our league and said that the young girls in their lives weren't interested in other sports and how it would be really great if we could get a junior roller derby league started. Roller derby has become a refuge for young girls that do play right now, that roller derby is a perfect fit for their child, for a child who doesn't feel that they fit in anywhere, that this is something that they'd like their child to be involved in and feel a part of. We assist other community organizations with similar missions. What we make from our events, our merchandise sales, our fundraising endeavors always finds its way back into the community. DRD is a charitable organization. We really love skating and playing roller derby. We aren't doing this to make money for ourselves. We're doing this to make donations and help support local organizations and families in needs in our own community. We're recently able to donate $1,000 of support to the Women's Center, and we'd like to continue our charity work with the community. However, at this time, the biggest obstacle in being able to grow our league and fully realize our potential is having a consistent, reliable, and affordable practice space. Our home season is strictly limited to the months that Lakeview is available to us. This is when we have to work our hardest to carry the league through the remainder of the year. We use the Borghus Street Gym from September to March and take what we can get for floor time, but there's, it's not adequate for bout space. Lakeview is a critical component to our league's strategic plan and overall success, and so I'm asking, as president of the league, that you, the commission does not adopt the new dry floor rate change recommendations for Lakeview Arena at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone? Jamie Butterey? Yeah, Janelle.
Hi. Janelle Butterey, 1515 Fitch Avenue. Claire gave you the background on roller derby and what we're all about, our mission statement, and I'm just here with the facts. I work very closely with the Parks and Rec Coordinator in scheduling all of our practice times, event times, figuring all the paperwork and the rates, and I'm not sure if you were provided with a copy, but we do have a written quote that was relayed to me via the coordinator, Parks and Rec Coordinator, of $15 an hour for practice and $50 an hour for events. With the new recommendation that was given to us at very last minute, and seemingly out of the blue, we do understand that the city has costs to cover, but we are going on in budgeting with our quoted rates. We need, we need the city to support us and stick with those rates, at least for this year, and we're willing to work with the city in future. But we are asking that those quoted rates are honored. We have over 102 practice hours scheduled from April until August, when the ice will go back on at Lakeview, and 35 hours of event rates. I've done the math, and our original quoted rates are half of what the prospective new rate would be, and the events rate would differ by $5,000, which to us, being a nonprofit, is astronomical, and we simply just cannot afford that. And that would force us out of the City of Marquette and trying to find other spaces, and we don't want to do that because we're Marquette's hometown girls. We need to be here. Besides the fact that roller derby not only is charitable to us in our community, but it also brings in tourism. It brings in other teams traveling from all over Michigan, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and someday possibly from all around the world. There are tournaments, there are larger events that we could possibly, once we are to that, that status host, that would bring more and more economic feasibility to our city. So, again, we are asking that you do not approve the new recommended rates for 2013. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Those were the two people that were requesting to speak on this. At this time, I'll turn it over to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Schneider?
I just wanted to make a comment before any discussion or motion is made. I don't have any financial interest in where Derby is, but I am one of the founders of Dead River Derby, and I'm currently one of the refs, and I just wanted to make that clear. I believe the commission knows that, but I also wanted everybody in the audience to know that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Ryan?
I'd once again like to move, we suspend the rules so we can discuss this before taking action.
Second. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan asked that we suspend the rules for discussion, and it's seconded by Commissioner Naimi. Commissioner, all in favor, say yes.
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 The pose? Motion passes six to zero.
It almost seems like we're dealing with two issues here. Setting a rate for this facility and discussing whether or not the city made an obligation or made a commitment before those rates were set. You know, I have no problem establishing a rate going forward. I do have a problem kind of changing a commitment in midstream. If in fact, we did make a commitment, I think we should stay with it through the year. I don't think we have, you know, it sounds great to me, and I hope it's successful. I hope anything that goes on in Marquette is successful, but I don't think as a commission, you know, we can be encouraging, but we don't have an obligation to make it work. But on the other hand, we certainly don't have an obligation to kind of pull the rug out from under anybody either, so, you know, I would strongly feel that we should maintain our commitment, but I'm interested in seeing what others have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I agree, this is actually a three-part issue. There's one part dealing potentially with this commitment and clarifying that for people. The other is, we don't have a, the rates we're asking for, we don't currently have, Director Zugger will describe a little bit how we got there. So having staff quota rate actually is part of the problem. One of the things that we have to do is actually get a commission-approved rate for the facilities that would be in use here. Staff just can't, particularly the staff that actually made the quote, can't just quote whatever price they want to let out the city's facilities or the city's services. That's something that's controlled very exclusively as a power of the charter with the city commission, so that is something that we're going to have to deal with. The other part of this is the timing. Typically, the fee schedule is set concurrently with the city budget, and so in about a month or so, certainly within the next couple of weeks, in a month or so, the city commission will be very heavily engaged in the work sessions associated with the upcoming city budget, which would include a fee schedule. So, in effect, we've got an obligation or a commitment that wasn't necessarily made properly. We have a commitment that would correspond with the Derby Girls' requirement for their planning for the year, and then we have a commitment that would have to be made as part of the upcoming budget discussion. And to the extent we're trying to reconcile all of those three in this document with this requested action, that's really what we're trying to do, short of the follow-up work, obviously, with dealing with any staff shortcoming, or potentially any decision that the commission might make based on lowering a fee or putting any other terms or conditions on the agreement.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other commissioner comment? Commissioner Naimi?
I would certainly support honoring what was proposed, the Dead River Derby, when they talked to our staff, didn't know that they were being quoted a rate that was not supposed to be quoted to them. They built their fundraising on it, they donated $1,000 to Women's Center. If they had known what rate they were going to be surprised with, they probably would have donated to Women's Center. But I think we have an obligation, the employee is our agent, our agent represents us, I think we're responsible for what they do, good or bad, and I think we have to bite the bullet. I think Dead River Derby is being very generous, saying that, well, you know, they'll be trying to meet our rates next year, whatever rates we set, so I think it would be more than fair to honor the rate that was quoted to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Naimi. Commissioner Kambenzi?
I support that, too. I think we need to honor what was currently set for this group at Lakeview, and I guess I'm a little upset that this is coming to us in three parts, because I only see one part here, and that is, are we going to prove this or not? And I think that setting fees is a very formal process. It's something that should come to us all at once, and I do not want to do anything with this other than honor what this group was given for a contract right now. I think that if part of this process is trying to make Lakeview Arena revenue positive, no one's going to rent the arena for these rates, and I think we have to be realistic. I think we can't put everything onto the taxpayers to subsidize. We're not going to have anything left. So I think, coming forward, I guess, it does, it makes me a little mad that these are intertwined, because I think that it's not appropriate to put this on the commission's plate right now, to look at increased fees for this dry time. I think it needs to come to us when all of the recommendations come to us for what we set for rates.
Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Commissioner Kambenzi's. I think the issue on the table is agreeing or deciding how we feel about the commitment that had been made with Dead River Derby, and I think that the discussion about fees and how we deal with these fees is a separate discussion. I think that's a much bigger picture on how we're dealing with Parks and Rec and a lot of our facilities that we have. From my understanding, these are fees that we didn't have because nobody was really using, you know, especially the dry floor time at an hourly rate. And I'm curious from staff, if there's any other organizations, if we were to set fees today for some reason, are there any other organizations that are affected by this fee change as well?
No, not this time.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to make a motion that we maintain the commitment that was made by the City of Marquette with the Dead River Derby, and that we delay adopting these fees until the normal fee-setting process during the budget hearings.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, and a second by Commissioner Stein, Stone, Naimi?
One of those guys down there.
To set the rates that were... City Clerk, do you want to read that back, just to make sure we're on the same page?
I'm not sure I have it all right now. I'm not sure that you said something about...
We maintain our commitment for rental fees with the Dead River Derby, and we delay adopting new fees until the normal time during the budget process.
That's what I heard.
Thank you.
Which is only a short time down the road.
Okay, Commissioner Naimi?
I just have a friendly amendment to clarify that that would be $15 an hour for practice and $50 per hour for bouts.
If that's what it was, yes.
Yeah. That doesn't have to be as an amendment, because that's what it was.
Whatever the, whatever it was.
Just to, I guess, so everyone knows the numbers we're talking about anyways, so...
Okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second. Anything further, commissioners?
No.
Commissioner Schneider?
Well, since I've already stated my interest, I just want to throw out something that the other Dead River Derby members did not mention, which is, there is a game this Saturday in Kingsford. The following weekend is in Escanaba, and the first Dead River Derby home bout here in Marquette in Lakeview Arena will be May 18th.
Thank you. Okay, now with that motion, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to number seven. City Commissioner, meeting with Governor, City Attorney, City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the governor has invited the city manager and one city commissioner to attend a meeting in Lansing, Michigan on April 16, 2013. The meeting will be to discuss the current status of issues identified during the governor's meeting in Marquette. in Marquette in February of 2012. Fiscal effect, funds are available for travel expenses in the commission transportation budget. Recommendation, appoint one city commissioner to attend a meeting in Lansing, Michigan with the city manager on April 16, 2013. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Kembensy?
I would like to make a motion to support Commissioner Stonehouse be appointed to go with our city manager to the meeting in Lansing on April 16, 2013.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Kembensy, anything further?
I think Fred will do a good job and hopefully bring us back some good news.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Nothing further. I just wish him Godspeed.
Thank you. With that, there's a motion by Commissioner Kembensy and a second by Commissioner Neme. The question is on adoption of motion to appoint one city commissioner, which is Commissioner Stonehouse, to attend a meeting in Lansing, Michigan with the city manager on April 16, 2013. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Close. There's majority and affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to number eight, emergency dredging agreement. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, on March 27, 2013, Governor Rick Snyder signed Senate Bill 233 to provide roughly $21 million for emergency dredging projects at public Michigan harbors and marinas. The bill will assist 58 harbors affected by near-record low water levels in the Great Lakes Basin. The Prescott Isle Marina is included in the appropriation. At its February 11, 2013, meeting, the city commission approved the MDNR Agreement Addendum, Scope of Work Change, and Resolution to Include the Demolition of the South Pier and Carry the Project Forward to the Fiscal Year 2012/13 Budget. The agreement appropriated funds to account for 50% of the total project cost. The MDNR has recently issued an agreement and resolution that will assist the city with full cost of the dredging portion of the project, or $408,817. On March 11, 2013, the commission approved the award of a contract to Vita and Company Incorporated for dredging and demolition of the South Pier, Phase One of Prescott Isle Marina Plan. The total project bid is $477,959. Estimated cost of the South Pier demolition is broken out in the bid as $69,142. Both Representative John Keevila and Senator Tom Casperson should be recognized for their work lobbying the MDNR and state legislature on behalf of the city of Marquette to include the Prescott Isle Marina on the list of emergency dredging locations. Due to their support, the city's project has been recognized and funded. Fiscal effect, the Marina will realize an additional capital improvement revenue of $169,358 for FY 2012/13. However, state of Michigan funding may only be used for dredging purposes. The non-dredging portion of the cost related to the South Pier demolition is $69,142 and will be funded either through the general fund or bond issue. Recommendation, approve the Michigan Department of Natural Resources' Waterways Agreement and Resolution for Prescott Isle Marina to provide dredging services, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve the Michigan Department of Natural Resources' Waterways Agreement and Resolution for the Prescott Isle Marina to provide dredging services.
Thank you, sir. Second, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme.
I think this is a very welcome turn of events. I'd like to thank Senator Casperson and especially Representative Keevila. And also, I'd like to thank our staff. Without their tenacity, I don't think it would have transpired, so it certainly is going to be a boon to that project.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think Commissioner Neme hit it right on the head. If it wasn't for the staff keeping their eye open and seeing the opportunity, and if it wasn't for the help of both Keevila and Casperson, this would not have happened. So, kudos certainly to all of them.
Thank you. Any other commissioner to discuss on this? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. The question is on adoption of the motion to approve the Michigan Department of Natural Resources' Waterway Agreement and Resolution for Prescott Isle Marina to provide dredging service. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Close. There's the majority and affirmative, and the motion is adopted. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to number nine, city strategic plan subcommittee report. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a brief oral report. We don't have a written report. The city manager had sent out an email on summary of the committee's activities. But to give some background, the new charter requires that we do a strategic plan. It's a two-part effort. The first part calls for the manager to recommend a process, and the second part is the actual development of a strategic plan. The committee, along with the manager, were looking at the process. I think one thing that became clear as we looked at some of the other strategic plans that staff provided us is that some consultant resource is gonna have to, is going to be necessary to assist us with this. We don't necessarily want it to be a consultant's plan. We want it to be the commission's staff and certainly citizens' plan. And secondly, I think we spent a lot of time talking about the, recently, we've been talking about valuing the manager, valuing the attorney, and the need for the city commission to have goals and objectives. And we, once the plan is approved, I think it will be providing a set of goals and objectives for commissions to look at, prioritize, and follow. And so, we welcome that. And in the interim, we're hoping that our companion committee on evaluating the manager and city attorney will also stand up a process where we can, on an interim basis, get some goals and objectives to guide our commission. And I guess I would defer to Commissioner Ryan, and perhaps I haven't covered everything, but he may have something further to add. He was a member of the committee.
No, I think that very well covers it, except for the last point. I'm not sure that we quite determined whose responsibility it was to establish those goals, whether it was us or that committee, and whether, in fact, they were goals for the manager or goals for the commission and the city, so...
I guess I was just trying to give them a heads up to, and one last point I forgot to mention is, we've kind of set a target of having this process completed by September and start the strategic plan process September. Theoretically, we are required by charter to have the strategic plan completed by the end of 2014. So, we want to give the city and citizens enough time to develop a plan that we can all appreciate and guide us into the future.
Thank you. Mr. Berto, did you want to?
That's what it is.
That's what it is. It's just an oral report.
We have a speaker up at the...
He wrote through half of my first comment. Huh. This is what we were talking about. He's not, Mr. Stonehouse is not paying any attention. These are my opinions. Your Agenda Supplement cover sheet states little other than that subcommittee met for the first time on April 2nd, and that a report is prepared for tonight's meeting. No report was attached to the Agenda Supplement, and not much was given us tonight either. Why list this item for tonight if the report isn't published for your and the public's perusal? We scheduled this reading after we received a due opportunity to read the report, or else don't mention it in your supplement. All we had was a half-sheet of no information. Of concern is why Mr. De Pietro, given a choice of seven, appointed the three least visionary members to a subcommittee to develop strategic planning goals. All those three are all about, is this grab, 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 now, now, now. That's not planning. This is like having three of the same person representing the commission on the subcommittee. The three most likely to favor big-money interests at the expense of sound land management, as we've already seen affect Hartwood. Please reconsider replacing them with our two youngest members who have the most at stake, because they're forced to live the longest with the consequences of poor strategic planning. One of these candidates has demonstrated land use knowledge beyond the rest of you, and the other generally votes in the best public interest, not always in the favor of big-money interests. Strategic planning is a visionary process which requires visionary participants and ones who believe in the fundamentals of democracy. You've impaired the process before it ever began. Please incorporate a diverse range of candidates. And tonight's agenda calls for the discussion of a report that's not available to review. We're really off to a great start. How does a strategic planning scheme fit in with the south side parcel that became mysteriously proposed for rezoning in the revised master plan after all we've compromised in that area already? Please replace two of your appointees with ones who prioritize the perpetuity of our city's natural character over short-term big-money gains. Should you keep the three planted individuals, the final recommendation and the final recommendations favor big money will suspect their undue influence of leading to those recommendations, and those findings will be documented accordingly.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move to number 10, Marquette Senior High School to side saddle on the 29th of April. Commissioner Neme?
You've asked me to put this on the agenda. I understand that you and the city manager appeared at office hours at the high school and I think spoke to the, perhaps, the student council. And there was a proposal to involve students more with city government, specifically to bring some students in and sit side by side with commissioners, that they can participate as our cohorts in the meeting. I think it's an excellent idea. Anything that we can do to interest young citizens in government certainly is worthwhile. And perhaps you or the city manager could elaborate a little more on that.
City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. We've been trying to reach out to different constituencies. We get a lot of feedback from different members of the community about the communications that we've been trying to expand. Some has been through community office hours, some have been through specific outreach through the media, the expansion of our online presence, our publications that we put forward. And even as we do that, we try to seek out important constituents and members of the community. I and many of the commission have met with the student government of Northern Michigan University. And as an expansion to that, we've had an opportunity to sit down now on two different occasions and meet with the student council at Marquette Senior High School as the future leaders of this community and folks whose voice we'd like to have incorporated more in many of the plans that we have going forward. And so, we were very fortunate, I have to say, with some amount of trepidation. Anytime you sit down with a bunch of teenagers and try to get them to do anything, as a father, I can tell you, it's not always a challenge that comes requited. But in this particular case, we met the first time, we had a very positive experience, and offered the kids the opportunity to meet again, to give us feedback. And no harm, no foul. If it was something that they thought wasn't very interesting, we'd be glad to walk away, and we'll have been glad to have the chance just to sit down once. The response we got on the second meeting was overwhelming. It appeared to us, at least, that it looks like we have a council there that is very interested in providing their thoughts and views on what's going on in Marquette, the things that are important to them. They recognize that in a scant five or six years, they might very well be looking for appointments to our city committees or our boards. And so, to a person, they all expressed an interest in finding out ways where they could get more experiential firsthand partnerships developed with the city, where they could come in through the kind of traditional means of internships or other kinds of participation, up to and including, as representatives of their government, sitting sidesaddle to get a firsthand chance to observe how city commission meetings work, as maybe a first step to finding a way where their voice can help inform the judgment of this body. And so, at this point, we agreed we'd be working with the city council, subject to the commission's approval, to try to find some way where physically they would be sitting with the city commission during that meeting, sidesaddle, not obviously as voting members, but merely for observational purposes, to get a chance to see how our government works. And hopefully, that'll inform ideas they might bring back to us about how they can get more involved.
Thank you very much. And one of the things that impressed me was when we met with them in March, there was about 23 students in the government class. And then, when we met them in March, end of March, there was probably 34. But this was a brown bag during our lunchtime, from 12 to about 20 to 1:00. And they were all enthused, but they asked very, very good adult questions. They wanted to be involved. We got, you know, I mean, it was, to me, I was really surprised that they really want to be involved. And these are future leaders that are just around the corner, that are going to be representing their communities wherever they're at. And one of the things that I believe that they would really fit up here and get a good taste of, being able to sit here and watch the people in the audience and be able to interact with my fellow commissioners. So, I had wanted to throw that out there to my fellow commissioners, to see what their feelings were on this. And with that, with the city manager saying what he did, I'll turn this over to my fellow commissioners. And Commissioner Ryan?
I move the mayor and manager be authorized to work it out. Let's do it. Enough said.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner?
No, it sounds like a very good idea.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, I do want to comment on this. From 2007 to 2010, I had served as a Peace Corps volunteer in the Kingdom of Tonga. And one of the groups that I had worked with quite closely was the Tongan Youth Group. And we actually hosted an annual youth parliament, which seems very similar to this program, and I just wanted to offer it up to the mayor and the city manager as a concept. Instead of sitting sidesaddle with the parliamentarians there, what they did was, the youth had the chance to one-on-one be mentored by one of the parliamentarians, and then actually sit as a full parliament and go through the whole process. None of their votes were binding. None of that actually, I should say, mattered so much. But they all had the chance to sit through a full parliamentary session, using their own rationale and their own logic, kind of with an understanding from some of the elected leaders. And I thought that system is really well, worked really, really well. I like the idea of sidesaddle, but I think that that might actually bore them to some degree. So, I just wanted to throw that out there as a potential idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Kembensy?
I'd like to throw out one more thing, and that is, we have another body out there, and that is NMU. And I think we've all seen what their ASNMU student body has gone through over the last several years. But I'm always impressed when I pick up the North Wind to see the types of things that they're debating in that. And I'd like to plant that seed, that that's just another group that might be worthwhile to reach out to and strengthen our relationship with NMU, but certainly provide students that are even closer to getting out there and being true service members a chance to interact with us.
And I believe Commissioner Schneider wanted to follow up on that?
Sure, I will follow up on that. Not in the direction that you think I may go. But I wanted to say, one, I really want to thank the mayor and city manager for making this overture with the high school students. I think it's incredible. But also, if there are any high school students listening to this, you only got to be 18 to run. And no offense to the other commissioners, but we could use somebody who's 18 years old. We could use somebody who's 20 years old. That is a fairly large part of our demographic. And there may be some inexperience there that there's concern about. But we've got a lot of young people in this community, and I think having a voice on the commission at 18, 20 years old would be really quite valuable.
Correct. But also, I thought you were going to mention about us meeting with the student president at Northern.
We get to vote on this issue fairly soon. We get to vote on this issue fairly soon.
Yeah, basketball game's coming up.
I know, I realize that. Okay. Anyway, there's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Snyder, to authorize city manager and mayor to schedule a side saddle during, I believe, April 29th is what we're looking at?
Whatever works for you, too.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Close, motion passes six to zero. Thank you. I'll go to number 11. Commissioner Ryan had wanted to discuss the Hartwood Forest.
Well, you know, and I'm not going to beat this to death. This came up last time. We had an editorial in the newspaper raising questions about it. It's an issue I campaigned on, and I continually be frustrated by what I view as the lack of progress. But I'm not here to point any fingers. I guess it's just, let's establish some communication, try to be more specific. You know, who's court is the ball in? You know, I believe the court's in the, the ball's in the court staff, but the staff's court, but others may feel differently. So here's what I think specifically. You know, I see this in three categories. Number one, let's formally establish a park, you know, something that we can define as a nature preserve and recreation area. You know, I think this can provide great benefits for the city recreationally and economically, but I think we should do it. You know, say, this is, this is the park. I think we should develop a name, and one of the, one of the members of the task force suggested that, something that identifies it as part of the Marquette area. I think we should conduct public hearings to determine what type of activities the residents want to see in that park. You know, we know what some needs are, but perhaps there are some others. I think we should investigate possible grants to be used for park enhancement. This is an extremely unique piece of property, and I find it hard to believe it would not be eligible for some potential grants. And finally, I think we should invite, finally on this point, invite Marquette and Sands Township to be part owners in the park that will be established. I think the second category is future planned area. There are areas within the Hartwood Forest, the original task force defined as deferred development. The Planning Commission reviewed their recommendation and made their own recommendations back to this commission. Those recommendations included a recommendation to conduct a community-wide planning process on those areas in question. The Planning Commission's recommendations were adopted by the city commission two years ago, yet nothing has happened. So I think that's why I get concerned. The third aspect of the plan includes those areas designated for potential development or designated as surplus for those and other units of government. Frankly, there are a few areas designated for development within the city, overall within the Hartwood area, but no action has been taken to allow development to proceed. This is an area within the Hartwood Forest that has been designated for potential residential development in the master plan, at least part of it, but there have been no proposals for that to happen. So, this is an opportunity for the city to recoup some of its investment in that property. So I think there's a lot of work to be done, and, you know, I'm just wondering who's going to do it and when to get started.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And the other, Commissioner Kambenzi?
Well, I'll follow up on that. I think when I speak about the Hartwood property, what I'm seeing happen is, I was on the Planning Commission when we sent that to you, and what I'm seeing is that we're kind of at a standstill. And so we have groups coming to us now worried about what's going to happen to that property. And I think there's more out there, I think there's developers out there. And what's going to happen is if we don't have a plan for this area, whether we preserve it all, whether we slice a little bit off here or there, it's going to be chaos, and we're going to end up doing one thing here and one thing there. And when you have planning that happens that way, the results usually aren't favorable. So I, I think there's several ways we can go about this. The only thing I'm going to disagree with Don about is I think the ball is in our court to be kind of specific as to where we want this to head. So I think it's a huge part of our strategic plan, and I think we need to be specific as to where we're at and where we want to go as a commission. So I'll throw that out there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kambenzi. Commissioner Nemea?
Thank you, honor. I kind of agree with both commissioners. Perhaps it's in our court, I think the, you know, we, you know, as mentioned, there was the ad hoc committee, the Plan Commission vetted that plan, recommended it to us. I think we have a rough structure or breakdown of what, you know, what the property is supposed to be done, and I think Commissioner Ryan makes a good point. If we were to name a certain part, portion of it that we know that's for recreation as a park, it's going to protect that, because parks can't be, can't be just sold off or developed, et cetera. And, you know, there's a longer process that has to be done, but perhaps what we ought to do is, and perhaps, actually, Commissioner Ryan probably enunciated this, but he said a lot, so I don't remember. But we, perhaps we should have a public hearing saying, you know, we've got this breakdown of property that was proposed by the, the ad hoc committee, was confirmed to some degree by the Plan Commission. Is there any opposition to us, you know, saying that the green parts can't be named park? And then we will do further in the future. And the deferred development could also be put in with the, with the parkland, because I think, I'm not sure that the fact that it was deferred, that they, that the committee thought we should sell it off or use for recreation, I think it was more lean for recreation, but there was, there was some other consternation that, that didn't let them put it in one category or another. But, you know, that would be, that would be a start, and then staff would know that. And I think what we had to do is find some big-moneyed interest to sell some of that money, the surplus land, too, so. That's my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nemea. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, I just want to throw in, I guess, my two bits as well. I like a lot of the ideas that Commissioner Ryan had mentioned regarding, regarding potentially turning it into a park and some of the ideas surrounding that. I know that this has been a long process, but this is government, and it does take quite a while. And I agree with Commissioner Kambenzi that I believe that this is on us, and I think part of it fits within our master plan or strategic plan, that we're putting together to figure out how we want to deal with it. And I definitely think that, that it's on us to really decide that this is really what we want to do and how we want to go about it. But I like some of the ideas that were presented, and I do have faith in the slow process of government, that at some point we will get it done, especially since it has come up repeatedly.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Kambenzi?
Just one more thing. I think it goes back to what I said at our work session the other morning, and that is, I think the more specific we can be to charge staff with where we want them to go and I guess where, where we want to be headed, I think it serves us better to get the results that we want and to kind of put the charge out there that's, you know, maybe a little more specific. And maybe that's where we're at right now with the Hartwood. We as a commission need to be a little more specific as to what we want the next step to be. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I just want to say, I did make seven or eight specific recommendations within that, so I don't know how much more specific I could be. And I, and I don't believe it's just up to us. I think once we adopted the city commission's recommendation, you know, that it is, at least partially, the responsibility of the staff to come back and tell us how we can begin to implement them, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Seeing none, I'll move to number 12. That's Consent Agenda D, Establish a Pumpout Fee for the Presque Isle and Cinder Pond Marina's of $15 for 30 gallons or less, and $30 for greater than 30 gallons for the 2013 operational season. This was brought up by Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yeah, I may be in a quandary here, because I obviously am a fee payer at Cinder Pond, and obviously would be paying whatever pump-out fee we determined. So I'm not sure if I can, or should have made the motion to originally have pulled it off the consent agenda. That said, I know there's folks in the audience that would like to speak to it, and I want to make sure we have an opportunity for them to do that. I would also point out or suggest that that is a very radical increase, and that gives me some concern, while it's only 10 bucks or 5 bucks or whatever. It is a radical increase. It, it's one that we perhaps should look at doing in the fee structure when that comes in front of us rather than as a separate item. I would have some trouble as a fellow who understands the process closer, knowing that, you know, there's some big boats that come in there and pump a lot of stuff, and charging them 30 bucks isn't really enough to address the stuff that they're pumping. So I would suggest that staff really perhaps take a different look at that. I see the attorney wagging his finger here, but they haven't carted me away yet, so I guess I...
We typically use, read the agenda item first before...
Ah, yes. Yes, there is. There is an agenda item.
And then I know that it's, it's all right that you moved it off the agenda item, but having disclosed your conflict, I think you should refrain from voting on anything that we do.
Yes.
Certainly moving it off the consent agenda, the regular agenda is fine, but I think the process should be, read this item first and then...
I stand corrected, and I will certainly bow to the city clerk.
Thank you, honor. Anyways, at this time, there was a...
Do you want to read the agenda item first, your honor?
I read it off.
There is the write-up from the consent agenda.
Yeah. Forty-seven. Forty-eight.
Yes, your honor, the recommendation, excuse me, this was subject is the Marina pump, pump-out fees. The recommendation is establish a pump-out fee for the Presque Isle and Cinder Pond Marina's of $15 for 30 gallons or less, and $30 for greater than 30 gallons for the 2013 operational season background. Each year, the Harbor Advisory Committee, or HAC, reviews rates for the Presque Isle and Cinder Pond Marina's and makes recommendations for the city commission to consider. At the February HAC meeting, the committee recommended all 2013 Marina fees, with the exception of the pump-out fees, requesting staff to provide a cost analysis for pump-out services. Staff provided the cost analysis, accounting for water sewer, labor maintenance, and infrastructure, and pump replacement costs. The costs were further broken down by anticipated gallons served. After review of the analysis, the committee voted to recommend increasing the pump-out fees to meet operational maintenance and replacement costs. The committee reviewed the report and recommendation of the city commission, let's see, the committee reviewed the report and recommendation, city commission, for the city commission increasing the pump-out service fees at the Presque Isle and Cinder Pond Marina's to $15 per pump-out service equal to less than 30 gallons, and $30 for pump-out service greater than 30 gallons. The fee increase will account for full-cost recovery fiscal effect. Based on an average of 182 annual pump-outs, the Marina Fund will realize an increase of approximately $2,630. Recommendation, establish a pump-out fee for the Presque Isle and Cinder Pond Marina's of $15 for 30 gallons or less, and $30 for greater than 30 gallons for the 2013 operational season, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, I'll open this for public comment. Mr. Frack?
Once again, my name's Bob Frack. I live at 332 Rock Street. Greetings, and thank you. I am both a boater and a member of the Harbor Advisory Committee. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as a boater and a concerned citizen of Marquette. At our January meeting, when the slip and launch and transient fees were set, the study suggested a pump-out rate of $5 for under 30 gallons and $10 for over 30 gallons, and a commercial rate of $250 for unlimited pump-outs. Seeing some faults in this rate, the fee schedule items were tabled. The fee study presented tonight, I feel, does not actually or fairly represent the justification of the proposed rates. The rate proposed to you tonight is at 100% replacement cost, at less than the 25- to 30-year life expectancy of the pump, and if you use the grant money that's available to you, your replacement costs will be at 25% and not 100%. This, the rate study also states that 30% of our pump-outs are over 30 gallons, and it shows a labor time of nearly 40 minutes. It also shows a labor time of 15 minutes for tanks under 30 gallons, which is close to being accurate. I know my tank takes less than five minutes from start to finish. I don't see how or why the labor time would be directly assessed to pump-out fees if prior to that, the employee was either sitting at a desk or watching TV or talking with fellow boaters at a picnic table. Over $250 million in grant money from the federal government has been given to pay 75 cents on every dollar spent since the early 90s, since the early 90s by the Clean Waters Act. That's $5 million a year. This is for repairs, installation, updating of equipment. In exchange, a rate of $5 is to be charged unless you can show justification for the cost for higher rates. Across the U.S., a vast majority of public marinas charge the $5 rate, and some are at $6. After 10 years of depreciation, you're allowed, you are allowed to charge whatever rate you see fit. Most marinas stay at the $5 or $6 rate. With today's cruising websites and apps, word travels very quickly amongst boaters, and I don't think it would be good for Marquette to become known for $30 pump-out fees. If you take advantage of the grant money available to you in the future with Presque Isle updates or Cinder Pond replacement, why pass the proposed rates for such a short period of time? I would like to see you ask the Harbor Advisory Committee to reconsider the proposed rate fee or reinstate last year's rates of $6 for the coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Then there was Brenda. Did you ask to comment? Tim?
Jamie.
Oh, Jamie, okay. One of you two, everyone, come up first.
Thank you for taking the time to let me speak. I appreciate that. Commissioner Ryan, I'd like to thank you for bringing in Sands Township and Marquette Township into the meeting. That was very good of you. Thank you. One thing I would like to present, through my research and through the research of the Presque Isle concerned citizens, these are some numbers that were achieved on February 15th, 2013. A slip fee, these are for 28-foot slips. A slip fee in Houghton for a 28-foot boat, $1,020. Marquette is 22% higher than that. Their pump-out rate is $5. Gladstone, $1,061, we're 19% higher than that. Their pump-out rate is $5. Munising, $1,123, we're 15% higher than Munising. Their pump-out is also $5. Manastook, $1,232, we're 6% higher slip fee. Their pump-out, $5. Menominee, $1,275, we are 3% higher than Menominee. Menominee, we're 3% higher than. Much more boating there than what we have here. Their pump fee is also $5. So the proposed boat, or pump-out fees seem to be quite astronomical compared to what's going on in our greater surrounding areas, not only Lake Superior, also Lake Michigan. Right now, Presque Isle and Cinder Pond stand at $1,315. The only Marina within 100 miles of here right now that has a higher rate is Esconaba. They show at $1,347, but their pump-out rate is still $5. So I would like to ask the city commission to definitely reconsider this and put this back to the Harbor Advisory Committee for more consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to say, I strongly oppose the increase in the pump-out fees. Again, a comment that was made earlier about boaters using the lake to pump out as opposed to actually using the dock if those fees happen. And I would like to say, if you guys are looking to get increased funds, then maybe you shouldn't be giving away Marina dock space. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe that was the last one that requested time to speak on this item, so I'll turn this over to my fellow commissioners. I'll say that one more time, I'll turn it over to my fellow commissioners.
First every time.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
Well, I'm going to agree with some of the statements said before, and certainly how I felt about, you know, the fees for the roller derby women. I think this is a steep increase, and I think when we look at everything else we do around the city, whether it's water rates, sewer rates, we compare what we're doing with other communities. I think that's a fair way to do it. And so, there's, there's no way I could support such a steep increase, and I guess, I'd like to have us look at more... have us look at more data before we make any fee increases like this, and I don't think this is the right time to impose these. Thank you.
Commissioner Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am a little confused. I'm looking at the proposed 2012-2013 budget. We had a fee proposed for July 1/12 to June 30/13 of ten dollars for a pump-out. Is that what we charged last season, ten dollars, or did we charge six dollars?
Ten dollars is what it should have been charted.
No public comment, sir.
Well, yeah.
No public comment.
Pardon?
We don't have a motion pending for this discussion.
Well, then, we should, I guess we should move to suspend the rules and allow discussion. Also move.
Support.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now we can continue discussion. Okay, that's, you know, the fee schedule says ten dollars. I don't know. Apparently, somehow, it got lost in the detail. Another item, and I guess I don't necessarily agree with this, we clearly say on our fee schedule, no charge for slip renters. I think it's neat that we got the additional revenue, but our fee schedule says no charge for slip renters. So what, you know, how do we reconcile the differences?
Do you want me to talk?
Who are you asking, Commissioner Amy?
I'm asking whoever, I guess the city manager, and he can direct whoever he wants to.
Thank you. I'd like to have Director Zuger answer the question.
Yeah, I think the, you know, what's in front of you is really moving forward with charging everyone for pump-out services. I think that's the intent. I think that's always been the intent. If it was lost in translation, perhaps it was, but moving forward, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is move forward, do the right thing. We're suggesting that all, whether they be seasonal slip holders, transient slip holders, be charged the same rate, which is the rate that's in front of you. And just to kind of give you some background, you know, we've been working with the Marina fees, but really, all of our fees, and looking at cost recovery and what that strategy should be, and really trying to get an idea of what it should be moving forward and what the commission would like in terms of a policy perspective, you know, as to, is it a hundred percent? Is it ten percent recovery? And so I think with the Marina fee or Marina funds, it's been working towards a seven-year plan to make it fully, fully whole. I think the Harbor Advisory Committee, when the staff brought this to them, they looked at this and said, "Well, we want to see what the cost is in making it whole," because we didn't, they didn't feel, from my understanding, and certainly, the chair of the Harbor Advisory Committee is here tonight, Bob Frazi, in the audience, and maybe he can answer that question as well. But I think it was their intent to have staff bring back to them an idea of what it would cost to make this whole. And so staff looked at it from a utility perspective, a labor perspective. We looked at the yearly fixed costs as well as replacement. And with that, we've got a total per pump-out cost, and we did look at infrastructure, which would be the infrastructure that leads to the pump, as a forty-year depreciation value on that, and then we looked at the actual pump, and that is a twenty-year replacement value. And so we tried to really break it down as much as we could and provide the Harbor Advisory Committee as much as information as they have, as they can get, to make a decision for a recommendation to the commission. And then we also looked at how many pump-outs we do and tried to get an idea of how many were over thirty gallons, how many were under thirty gallons, so that we could do or provide the Harbor Advisory Committee with enough information that it would meet the costs. And it cost us about, I think last year, we've got an estimate of three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars is what it cost us to provide that service. And based on our revenue analysis last year, we, the fund realized nine hundred and ten dollars worth of revenue. I think it was the intent of the Harbor Advisory Committee to close that gap in some capacity. They felt that the general fund shouldn't subsidize the pump-outs, and so they wanted to do their due diligence, and I think it's based on some of the actions that the commission's taken in the past, to show what it would be if it were a full-cost recovery fee. I think they had some spirited discussion, and, you know, their recommendation was to move it to the commission as a full-cost recovery, which is the fifteen dollars for less than thirty gallons and thirty dollars for greater. That's the process that they followed, and certainly, the Harbor Advisory Committee is here, or we've got the chair, and he can speak to some of the steps that they took.
Commissioner Amy?
Just a couple of final comments. I, you know, I've always been for increasing revenue for the Marina and reducing the general fund participation, and one good way to do it is we can pick up eighteen thousand over the next three years by charging our flagship. The other thing is, I guess I would like to see it perhaps go back to the Harbor Advisory Committee, and I would like to see a commercial rate in here. You know, if you're going to put two hundred gallons of sewage in, I think you ought to pay more than thirty dollars, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yeah, just a little bit of history, if I can. They kind of bring the whole issue, I think, in the focus. Mr. Frack made mention of the Clean Water Act and the funding that was available from that. When many of these marinas were built nationwide, starting after World War II, and really when the whole issue of clean water became, began to come into the public view much stronger than it had previously been, the Clean Water Act provided pump-out facilities at all of these marinas. Many public ones, some private ones took advantage of it. And the idea was that prior to then, people were dumping in the water. Many of the boats manufactured had a switch literally from the facility in the boat over side. So you simply pumped it into the water. And that was true in the Great Lakes, too. That was right true in Marquette, anywhere in this country. So Clean Water Act, Congress, in effect, provided a large amount of money to stop that action from happening, to properly treat the sewage, which is what it was. In the interval now, we fast-forward thirty years, and now, most of us are no longer doing that, most of us, virtually nobody is, obviously. The boats that had been manufactured with those throw cutoffs, often referred to as emaciator pump that will chew it all up and then spit it out, are either illegal, or you have to have it disbanded on your boat such that it cannot function. And in fact, new manufacturer on the lakes, I don't think, hasn't installed anymore. So we're really dealing with a relic of a little bit here. In other words, what was happening back thirty years ago, we fast-forward, we don't do the practice anymore. The original five-dollar fee was intended to serve as a, such a minor amount of money that people would do it, to encourage the use of the new pump-out. And we're now beyond that, and nobody's doing it. So five dollars is really no longer relevant in terms of the greater discussion. It can be whatever you choose to place it at, because we have, as a public, changed. Maybe there's still some regulatory requirements on that, don't know. But again, that was the basis of the original idea, and of course, we've had that pump there in excess of twenty years now. That's still the original facility. So again, just a little perspective of why it's even there and why that five dollars came from.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Ryan?
You know, I don't have a boat. I have nothing in the Marina. I used to have a boat years ago on the Dead River Basin, but it didn't need to be pumped out. It didn't have anything to pump out, but, so I enjoyed being in a boat, but, you know, I have no real knowledge on this issue. But it just seems to me that if everybody else is charging five dollars and we're charging fifteen, something doesn't seem to add up. You know, I mean, it's, I don't know. I don't know what the reason is, what the answer is, but it just doesn't seem to make sense. And maybe it goes back to what Commissioner Stonehouse just said, in that this was established as a way to get people to do it at a reasonable fee, and everybody else has just kept it at that level, and now we're trying to put it on a pay-as-you-go basis. It's kind of interesting that, you know, we're going to spend a lot of time debating this and talking about this, and the increase in revenue is twenty-six hundred dollars. Not that that's inconsequential. I don't mean that, but obviously, you know, it's, this isn't going to pay for the maintenance of the Marina. I'm concerned by two things. Number one, and I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not accepting them as gospel, but, you know, a couple of people have mentioned Marquette being identified as unfriendly to boating. Certainly, we don't want that to happen, or I don't want that to happen, and I don't know that it's true. And, you know, some emails I've received, and I'm sure other commissioners have received, that, you know, that we're not doing an adequate job of maintenance on some of our marinas. So, you know, I really think it's an area we have to look at. You know, it's one of those businesses that, you know, it's even a question as to whether a city should be in the Marina business, but we are. And the fact that we've accepted grants to establish these marinas, we have to somehow find out a way to make them work. And I think that's what staff's trying to do, so... Those are my thoughts, but I don't have an answer, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other commissioner? See no other further comments? Is there a motion on this? I'm sure we'll have to have a motion.
I would move we refer it back to the Harbor Advisory Committee for further discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Snyder? Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
No.
Commissioner Snyder?
A little bit, I think, if you mind, if you don't mind my rambling. I don't, I don't really have formulated thoughts on this. I don't like the idea of money being used from the general fund to pump out somebody else's stuff. And so I would like to find a way that we can have as close to cost-neutral as possible for the city. But, you know, I'm in a similar position as Commissioner Ryan. Boating is not a part of my life. It's not something I really understand. I'm very concerned, and I hope the staff understands it, I'm very concerned that we may be viewed as unfriendly to boaters, and when we're surrounded by five-dollar and six-dollar fees, and we're talking about a fifteen-dollar fee, you know, that's a conversation I would actually like to have with the HAC in more detail, to really get an understanding of it. Having it presented like this, you know, I'm hearing staff's concerns, and I understand them, and I'm hearing boaters' concerns, and I understand those as well. But it is something that I would like to have in greater conversation, so I definitely want to support Commissioner Ryan's passing it back to the HAC and maybe further discussion on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Any other commissioner with further discussion? See, none, I'll ask the question. And there's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Snyder, to return this back to the Harbor Advisory Committee, and that is the Marine pump-out fees. Is that correct? Okay. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes. Okay. Five to zero with Commissioner Stonehouse abstaining. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to public comment. Comment should not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda. Limited three minutes per person. Please state your name, physical address, if you hadn't in the beginning. If you had, you do have to repeat your name and physical address. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. Just two quick items. One, I support the coaster and feel it is a benefit to the community, and as city commissioners, you know what shape your Marina Fund is in. And rather than waive the dockage fee, if you really feel that it's worth what the suggested dollar amounts were there to you, I would like to see you pay it through the City Promotional Fund and use taxpayer dollars if it's going to be a Marquette City flagship. On the second item, the five-dollar fee is a requirement by the federal government. I had talked with Julie Moan in Minnesota. If you accept federal funds, which they will pay you seventy-five percent of your expenses on your pump-outs for installation, maintenance, and repair, you are required to charge the five-dollar fee. Some communities, Florida, it's free, other communities, it's less. You can charge more if you can prove to them that your expenses are higher, you can charge a higher rate. But initially, for thirty gallons and under, you are required to charge five. After ten years, when it's fully depreciated, you are allowed to charge whatever you really desire. But the five-dollar fee is because it is so subsidized that your expenses really aren't what was on your report. It's, they're much less.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Brenda Kurian, 116 North Bertrand Lake Road, Gwin. And I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, for considering, or at least sending it back to the Harbor Advisory Committee for the pump-out fees. You know, that's really, and we talk about the macerator pumps, they still make the macerator pumps, because when you get out of the intercoastal waterways, once you get so many out into international waterways, you're allowed to dump. Okay? So there are still boats that have those. I know in our Marina, I think there's only three of us, that have tanks over thirty gallons, and these pump-outs don't measure the gallons. They don't measure what they're taking out of your boat, you know? So we might pump it out when it has six gallons in it, or when it's a full fifteen. So it's very difficult to get accurate data for those reports, and some of the information that was used, I think, was quite skewed. The other thing I'd like to really reiterate, too, you know, at Presque Isle, we only have one Marina person, but when we've gone and spent a night on the wall or whatever, or you spend time at the Lower Harbor, they have multiple people. And even when we get one of our Lower Harbor, one of the people that come up from Cinder Pond and work on some of the days off for John, they're playing frisbee in the park with their friends or whatever. It's not like you can charge every minute of their labor to that, because that's what they're being paid to do, is to fuel boats, dock them, and pump out. So they're being paid that, whether they do one pump-out that day or they do thirty. You know, so I mean, I just wanted to look at, I did get a chance to see the sheet that the numbers were on, and I just think there's a lot of assumptions made putting together those numbers, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Mike Conley, 500 East Ridge Street, Marquette, and I am on the Harbor Advisory Committee. Tonight was another example of a number of organizations that are, represent good causes that ask for taxpayer subsidies, and I think we need to decide what will the taxpayers bear on this. The management or the city staff brought to you the costs involved with pumping out. They did not bring out the fact that the sewer project last year in the Lower Harbor was another quarter of a million dollars. That was not charged to the Marina Fund. There are other operational expenses that are not charged that would make it truly an enterprise concern. So what I, I'm confused now, as a member of the Harbor Commission, you're referring this back to us. Would you like to get back a dollar amount? Do you want us to determine the percentage of cost that you would like to see us charge? Or just what? I'm confused at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Amy Conover, 419 North Fourth Street in Marquette. I would like to begin by thanking the commission for honoring the quote that was given to the Dead River Derby. As a member of Dead River Derby, we appreciate that honoring to allow us to continue the work that we do in providing the service, and hopefully, we'll have many attendees so we can provide some good donations to our organizations here. I would also like to reiterate a comment that has been made in front of this commission by others in the community regarding fluoride in treatments in the water. I know there's a lot of skepticism about fluoride's benefits or detriments. There is scientific evidence that fluoride replaces iodine in the body's systems. An excess of fluoride can lead to iodine deficiencies and thyroid problems. So I guess I would support the comment that we look at our amounts of fluoride and bring them down to the lowest possible levels so that if we are including fluoride, we do it at a level that is the least likely to provide, to cause problems with people who are sensitive to and may develop thyroid problems. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Those who oppose my comments are asked to produce specifics. These are my opinions. Still no pedestrian safety on the agenda, even after a member's March 11th mention of a car traveling recklessly at forty miles per hour up Front Street.
of a car traveling recklessly at 40 miles per hour up Front Street. March 2050 said that or another car traveled at 55 miles an hour up front, and probably next time, 70 miles an hour. While you sat on your heels, I was almost run down in a crosswalk escaping by one foot, much to some of your chagrin. March 25th, Mr. Nemee motioned to move the professional service contract for Third Street to the consent agenda. You need to keep business items where they are to account for the possibility that someone might have prepared to speak on them, especially items of public importance like Third Street. None of the six members were on the ball enough to realize this, and the seventh wasn't seated for roll call, so zero out of seven. The manager holds a special meeting prior to each agenda's publication to avert this kind of oversight. Once more, please use common sense. Schedule items where they belong, describe them properly, and account for the due public process. Mr. Ryan is tired of this repetition, so please shape up. An acclaimed educator states, if you want something to sink in, don't say it once, say it over and over. You've ignored critical input no matter how many times it's repeated. Therefore, you'll keep hearing about the roundabout, the lakeshore site, picnic rocks, and the time reduction because each time a person is affected, you've committed a new and separate injury. March 25th, another citizen alleged that other members are bullying the mayor. Oddly, the two main critics who scrutinize this board derive at the same assertion independently, although in different words. A case in point is the time reduction. December 13, 2004, Mr.'s Bradley and Erby, two of the most abhorred officials in Marquette history, first tried reducing the time. They failed five to two. Then November 12, 2002, seven, two of those motioned to reduce agenda comment time failed for lack of a second. This means that of all 14 votes, only three, or 21%, place so little value on public input as to try and reduce it. How then did six of you, seven, choose to reduce our closing comment time? 21% previously compared to 86% with the present bunch. It's outside the realm of probability. Few will argue that Mr. DePietro was one of the more public-minded officials to ever serve on this board. There's no chance he'd have lowered himself this way on his own unless he'd received undue influence. Lo and behold, adjacent to his right shoulder are Mr.'s Ryan and Coin, two of the most dangerous alleged spreaders of undue influence this board has ever seen. Your votes to reduce our time were beyond coincidence. It had to be influenced, Johnny.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Good evening. I'll keep it short. You're Malanquin at Marquette Drive. It is a tough decision to do or decide on subsidizing. You just accepted some marina dredging as being part of it subsidized through the federal tax dollars. Somebody has to pay for it at some point in time. And so, do you start subsidizing the fuel cost for the boaters as well because it's all-related cost? And so, where do you draw the line? Sometimes, and I'm not accusing anybody, but sometimes the enjoyment of a privilege becomes a right and people get kind of confused what a right is and what a privilege is. And boating is probably more of a privilege than a right. And so, how do the taxpayers and counties and the states and the federal subsidize those items for the community? Tough decisions. I'm glad you're trying to decide that rather than me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? See none, closest portion of public comment. And turn over to commissioners for Commissioner comment. Commissioner Ryan?
Just a couple of quick comments. The, must about a couple of weeks, we've honored some Marquette High School sports teams here, and I'm glad we did. They deserve that recognition. But I also had an opportunity on March 26th to attend a program called Spotlight on the Arts, which included the Marquette High School, Bothwell Middle School, and even the elementary kids from the elementary schools performing a music concert. And it was just outstanding, just a wonderful thing to see. And it was just a great evening. So I'd like to extend my congratulations to the music department people at, in the Marquette Public Schools. The other thing is, I was sitting in church on Easter Sunday morning and a couple of members of the congregation had some, some health issues. And it was handled well by the people in the church, but I knew they thought it was serious, so they called for some additional help, apparently. And I, as I looked out the window at church, I noticed the Marquette fire truck was out there. And it just gave me this good feeling to know that we live in a community where these kinds of services are always there. You know, we just have outstanding people in our public safety departments, fire department, police department. It's just good to know that these people are there when we need them. And I had asked the question before about the fire department responding on, on these kinds of calls and, you know, if they, if they believe there's a, if there's a protocol and if there's a potential danger to life, they're there, they're on the scene, they're a first responder. And it's just a great community that we have. We have, we have outstanding leadership in both our fire and police departments and outstanding personnel who are well-trained. And I think that's something we can take a lot of pride in, in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, the, the other committee did have a chance to give their report. I'll give a little short synopsis of, I think, of what we were able to accomplish. This was, of course, the committee that was looking at the city manager evaluation as well as city attorney evaluation. Had a very good, robust session. I think we came up with some pretty good ideas. I believe that if not next meeting, certainly the meeting following of this formal commission, we should have a straw man in front of you of what our solid recommendations would be. And I would presume that that then would become a point of departure for input from the rest of the, of the commission. So very successful, very successful session. Few points on the, on the marina, if I can, that maybe lose focus on us sometimes, but, you know, we are in the process of rebuilding Presque Isle, and that's going to cause boaters up there to be displaced. And the question is going to be for how long and under what circumstances. I would certainly hope that, you know, from a city perspective, we would be looking at a pro-rata return of slippage fees based on days lost or whatever would be applicable and valuable. You know, the dredging issue that Presque Isle is going to go through is to a point reflective of what's happening in the state of Michigan. State governments, I believe, providing somewhere around $21 million. They took that $21 million from the waterways fund. So waterways projects that were scheduled for 2014 have been pushed to 2015. My understanding, for example, is that includes the launch ramp up at Presque Isle. So that wasn't going to happen, not going to happen next year. The waterways has pushed it off a year right across the state with literally $20 million worth of work. Which, to a point begs another question that as boaters, we all should kind of keep in mind. If, if you're putting $21 million into dredging about 40 marinas across the state, and knowing that there's only maybe six or seven or eight dredging companies that are qualified to do that job, and understanding that dredging is only one part of the process, the larger part may well be how you get all that iron from this city to another city to go to work. You've got a very extended process that I believe will go on far longer than most people are giving it credit for. Whether that impacts Presque Isle or not, we're a little different one in kind of being an offset already planned and executing, but we certainly need to keep, need to keep all of that in mind. Other than that, nothing further, Your Honor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Kevansy?
I'll start off, just going back to the Hartwood and since Commissioner Coin isn't here tonight, I like how he always has just some friendly suggestions to some things we say, and that, that is that I, I do think Don and I agree on, on what he said about the Hartwood. And to me, it's getting the specifics, you know, into the dialogue with the community and the interest groups in there. And I think Commissioner Nemee had a great idea, and that's to start with some public hearings, and maybe we take some of those, two or three at each public hearing, but we get, we get a pulse. And I think that's what the community is looking for is to try and move it forward. And I do think it is, it is up to us to kind of put that in motion. The second, I think we need to be very specific on the motions we make, and I also think we need to make sure we're careful about what we kick back to committees and commissions. I see the issues there. We're asking these volunteers to spend all this time, and certainly there's times when we need them to take a second look at things, but I, I also think we need to be specific and reasonable when we do that. As far as the increase of fees with the marina, I think it's a slippery slope. I think there's, it's idealistic to think that we can come up with a fee structure to fund everything completely by the users. I don't think it's realistic. And so, I know there's a happy medium, but once again, who's saying that it has to be wholly, wholly provided for by the users? I, I think there's a balance, or we're not going to have anyone using it. So I, you know, I hope as we go forward, as we look at our fee rates, we really understand that in an ideal world, we would all pay for everything and life would be good. But I, I think right now, we've got a lot of people working really hard. We've got a lot of people with interest in this. And I think the goal is to kind of work together and come up with the best solution. So I, I hope we don't lose sight of that, especially with the Harbor Advisory Committee and, and the rates that we're looking at with the marinas. And fourth, I think Commissioner Stonehouse did a great job explaining our committee evaluation of the city manager and city attorney. I liked what Commissioner Snyder said in our meeting, and that is that we had some quantitative things that we looked at, meaning, you know, what's in the charter? What does that mean for the city manager and city attorney when we evaluate them? But also some qualitative ones, and that is, one of the documents I really like is a Sault Ste. Marie city manager evaluation. And that, it has some things in there, you know, just that you don't, you wouldn't see in kind of a, a dry evaluation. So I think when we got done with our first meeting, we felt we did the majority of the work, but we're going to polish it up and bring it back to the full commission. So again, a very positive committee meeting, and that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kevansy. City clerk, go have a time check, please.
Ten on my cell phone.
Okay, thank you. With that, if we're going to go past 10:00 PM, motion has to be made to extend the meeting beyond 10:00 PM. And under the rules of procedure, is there a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd prefer we go home, but out of respect for the other commissioners, I move we extend the meeting time beyond 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Sir's second. Commissioner Kevansy? There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Kevansy. All in favor? Say aye.
Yes.
Yes. Motion pass, six to zero.
Very easy, guys.
Commissioner Snyder?
All right. Even though I voted no on it, I still have things that I want to say. I was hoping nobody would make the motion in the first place. I wanted to bring up an issue that came up this last week with a surfer in our community. I know that, that the media, as well as, as the regional attention tended to put it, you know, kind of in a surfer versus city context. But having talked to our chief of police and also having talked to the surfer quite extensively who is at issue, I think they both handled themselves really well. The surfer asked that I read something in, to the record, which I told him that, you know, I wasn't willing to do, but I was hoping that another surfer would be able to do that on his behalf. But I just, I thought he was extremely polite. He felt bad for taking up the city's time in dealing with the issue, but I also thought he made it very clear that, you know, as a community, it's something we have to recognize as something that's going on. And just because we may not ever go out into the water in December with a surfboard, that doesn't mean that they're in distress and it's something that our community needs to not necessarily, I guess, call in emergency services because they think something dangerous is going on. As a climber, I've, I've been kicked off of city property numerous times for, for similar things, until finally people started understanding that. Another issue this evening, three different, interesting. I wonder who I am? So where was I going with that? Fees. We had three subjects this evening discussing fees. And normally, when dealing with, with fees, we deal with it during our budget session. We had three things come up this evening, and I guess they all kind of fit into the same department. And I'm kind of curious why, not that we need an answer, but it's just a general question on why we're dealing with fees separately outside of our fee process. And I appreciate the, the commission supporting Dead River Derby. And finally, I really want to thank the city manager and the mayor in reaching out to the high school students. I think the, the idea that you've come up with is fantastic. I think it's a great way to get youth involved, and I really appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Nemee?
We'll make this really quick because of the lateness of the hour. But regarding the students, I think it would be good if, as we get paired up with students, if we could find out who our student is so we'd have a chance to go over the agenda with them prior to the sit-down. That's all I have. Let's move forward.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to congratulate Captain Jeff Weston on his retirement from the Marquette Fire Department. After 26 years of service this past Friday, April 5th, Captain Jeff Weston had his last shift. Hi, my fellow commissioners, residents, and our mutual support fire departments and townships. Again, thank Captain Jeff Weston for his service and wish him the best in the future of retirement. Also, I'd like to take this time to thank our state of Michigan Hunter 9th Representative, John Kevela, and our state of Michigan Senator Tom Casperson on going out and talking to the Watersways Commission for the Upper Marina Emergency Dredging Grant. They were able to get 100% of this accomplished by meeting with these people. So again, I thank Representative John Kevela and Senator Tom Casperson for doing that. Also, I'd like to thank the Board of Light and Power Chairman Ed Angeli and all of the staff at Light and Power for taking my fellow commissioners and I on a tour of Shira Steam Plant. As the steam plant is down at this time, they allowed us to be able to look inside the huge boilers, turbines that were taken apart to show us all the moving parts of how it produces electricity. So a lot of times when things are out of sight, out of mind, you don't realize how much stuff is going on inside that Shira Steam Plant. And with that, I'd like to ask the city manager when, for him to announce his next community office hours, daytime, and location. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our plan for community office hours will be next week, April, I believe it's 17th, Wednesday, 10 to 12, in the community conference room at Peter White Public Library on the first floor. We'll look forward to having folks come out and share with us what they like and what they have suggestions to improve here in the city. And with that, I have no further comments, sir.
Thank you, city manager, Bill Fida. And with that, we're adjourned.